Hi, everyone. It's 5:32. We'll call the regular meeting of the Mashpee Public Schools School Committee to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the gloria of liberty and justice for all.
The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who live here and have sustained this territory for over 10,000 years. I would like, before we do public comment, I would like to welcome to guests who will be meeting with us later on the agenda, Dr., is it Dr., Dr. David Thompson and Dr. Renee McCall. You're both in the audience, so thank you for coming to meet with us this evening. Do we have any public comment?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay.
I don't know if you want me to make it now or later, but I had two, one agenda item request and actually two agenda items, really.
Is it changing this agenda?
No. For future.
Let's do it at the end.
Okay.
So you have the agenda in front of you. If there are no questions, can I get a motion to ratify the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to ratify the agenda of June 17, 2024.
I will second.
All right. Any further discussion? Dan, how do you feel?
I vote yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's unanimous. All right. I'm just going to take a second here because we actually have a schedule for a couple of seconds, just to let everyone know what's going to happen. So last week, we did a random drawing to determine which of the two candidates will go first. Based upon that, the first candidate we will be talking with is Dr. David Thompson, and the second candidate we'll be talking with is Dr. Renee McCall. We have scheduled approximately 45 minutes for the committee to ask questions of each of the candidates, so 45 minutes for each one. Prior to the meeting, the committee was asked to submit three questions that they would likely ask the candidates, and so those questions were sent to the candidates at the end of last week, so to help prepare them for tonight. We will ask Renee, Dr. McCall, to step out of the room while we're doing the questioning for Dr. Thompson, and then after Dr. Thompson is done, we will switch and have Dr. McCall come in, and Dr. Thompson will step out. After we have completed the question and answering, then there is on the agenda a period for which the school committee can deliberate on the two candidates and decide if they want to move forward with one of those candidates. Both of the candidates have been invited to come and listen to those deliberations. I think it's fair that they should know how the committee is moving and what they think. Assuming that there is a majority of the committee that is wanting to move forward with a particular candidate, that decision should be made after the deliberations. And then any appointment would be subject to, one, the candidate's acceptance, and, number two, us reaching a mutually agreeable contract. With that, then I think we'll move forward. It's 5:37, so we're a few minutes early, but Dr. Thompson, I've asked that each of the candidates do an introduction, then we'll have approximately the 40 minutes of questions, and then I've asked that they wrap up our closing statement at the end. With that, Dr. Thompson, I will turn the floor over to you. Welcome to Mashpee.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Good evening. It's an honor to be here in the beautiful town of Mashpee, interviewing to be your interim superintendent. I'm interested in this position because the work of the Mashpee Public Schools aligns with my core values of embracing diversity, working to meet the needs of a diverse student body, a commitment to ensuring that students are ready for the next step in their journey, be that college or career, a commitment to including student voice in decision-making, and a strong belief in ensuring students are in a learning environment that is safe and a place where they belong and can feel successful. After seven years as superintendent in Norwood, it became evident last summer that there was a shift in priorities and perspectives between the school committee and I. With my contract ending this June, I made the professional decision to announce I would be moving on, and I did that this past September. I figured it was the best course, the most professional way, to move the district forward. As the year progressed, the school committee is onboarding a new superintendent. I didn't want to impede that effort, and I have stepped aside. I'm currently on FMLA leave for family reasons, but those will be rectified in the next week or so, and that should not impact my availability come July 1st or whenever you would like an interim superintendent to start. Personally, I emphasize improving student outcomes and opportunities. I focus on ensuring students are enrolled in programs and give them feedback for their growth. To ensure this, we use data to inform our instruction and ensure student growth and improvement. In Norwood, we've developed career pathways to combine classroom learning, micro-credentialing, job-related experiences to help students explore future career paths. We've also increased our advanced course offerings and enrollment in these courses. I'm particularly proud of our increased enrollment of marginalized populations in advanced coursework. In addition, we have partnered with local trade unions to ensure that all students have a path to follow after high school, ensuring every student is connected to their school, and learning creates buy-in, lowers dropout rates, and shows connectedness to the real world. I possess excellent communication skills and have developed positive relationships with community partners to achieve district and community objectives. I've developed strategic plans to ensure stakeholders are well-informed about district initiatives, noteworthy happenings, and essential skills to ensure their student success. These skills have allowed the passage of two overrides in Norwood and gained universal support for our strategic plan. Furthermore, by partnering with community members and communicating our goals and ongoing work, we have made significant progress in addressing youth high-risk behavior and mental health. My core values begin with educating the whole child and ensuring equitable learning environments so that every student can achieve at a high level. I have worked in Norwood on diversity, equity, and inclusion of belonging, and we have made significant progress in the last four years, increasing access and removing barriers to educational opportunities for all. This includes work in marginal communities, special education, and multilingual learners to increase integration and overall achievement of these groups. I focus on facilitating a positive leadership and growth in others, which is critical to our work. Relationships are essential to any significant and long-term change in our schools. I have an open-door policy and work to develop a highly effective leadership team, highly effective principals, and other building leaders. I'm proud to have mentored two Massachusetts Principal of the Years and a Blue Ribbon School Principal. I have become an expert in change and adaptive leadership, as demonstrated by the significant improvement I've led in Norwood, Blackstone Middle and Raina Middle School. Lastly, I became an educator to make a difference and help create opportunities for my students. In over 30 years of education, I've held every key position, including statewide and national leadership positions, and work diligently to be the kind of leader who makes a difference and inspires and prepares others to do the same. The central tenets remain, and I now look forward to continuing to create systems of positive change here in Mashpee. Thanks, and I look forward to the conversation.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll start with the questions. Kathy, I'll let you start first, please.
Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
It's great to be here.
So I don't know if I'm giving you the softball questions to start, but we're going to go right into what are your thoughts on banned books and some of the conversations that's happening nationally around those.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there is kind of a national conversation and a list of books. I'll be honest with you, I'm not a fan of that, especially where we find people are just working off of what they're being told. Now, with that being said, we do need to have, and I know that you guys have policies, IJ, around curriculum materials, and we need to have a process to review. If someone has a significant concern about a curriculum material, then we should go through that process and follow that process, but we also need to make sure that we have age-appropriate items in our library that represent different student positions and what have you, and we need to preserve that. Now, with that also being said, parents should have the right to make decisions for their children's education. If there's something they don't want their child to have access to, I believe that we can facilitate that.
Okay. Can we go through all three, or do you want to bounce? No. Dan, do you want to take the next question?
Of course. So, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Thank you.
So, question for you, sir. As an interim superintendent, what will be your approach for understanding our community and the needs of the district?
Yeah, so I did share, the item I shared with you was a draft. Please, the draft, for some reason, when I copied, didn't come through, but this is a draft of a transition plan or an entry plan. Specifically, you know, and I have used that in the eight districts that I have come in, to come in and listen and learn. So that is the first thing. I, you know, my goal is, you know, if we're going to talk about 100 days or 90 days, you know, 100 meetings in 100 days, 90 meetings in 90 days, and obviously, some days will be zero and some days will be four, but I really need to learn the history and the context of Mashpee to ensure that I understand all the aspects of what is happening here, the historical perspective of what has happened here, why decisions were being made before we go forward. So with that, what I do is I meet with all stakeholders, students as well, parents, parent groups, obviously, starting over the summer, probably would concentrate more on, you know, the town, the, you know, the tribe, tribal council, hopefully, maybe PTOs, obviously school committee members, individual school members, but meet with them, listen to them, learn more about Mashpee so that I can be in a position where I'm going to be able to ask good questions and make good decisions. The one thing that you will have with me is someone who is more focused on making a good decision for my students, my teachers, and staff in general, and the district as a whole, than it is to make a fast decision. So I would come in on a listening and learning tour, to learn about what is really going well here, figure out what are the things and what are the action items that would need to go forward, obviously, you know, cross-section that with the strategic plan and the school committee goals as well, and figure out a path forward. As an interim superintendent, you don't want to lose momentum for what the district is working on, and that is important, and that's why those conversations with you as school committee members is so important this summer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Eve, do you have a question?
Um, not at this time, no. I think I'm trying to grasp the whole field.
Okay. We'll come back to you later in the session. Brian?
What knowledge do you have on the town of Mashpee and/or the history of this area?
Yeah, so, well, first of all, it's one of the prettiest and best-preserved areas of the Cape. My wife's family actually spent many years vacationing on the southern shore of Mashpee. You know, I know that the town was incorporated in 1870. It is the tribal homeland of the Mashpee-Wampanoag, and that cultural piece has been embraced by the town, looking back at the work that the school has done with cooperating and collaborating with the education center at the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, and working to, you know, celebrate those cultural aspects and make sure that they are being preserved, helping and supporting students of Native American heritage is important, but this area, you know, began as a place for, you know, the Mashpee-Wampanoag to live, and I did do a little bit of history searching in those first few hundred or so years, the arguments and the tugback and forth with, you know, property and owning property and those sorts of things. But this is, you know, I look at it at now, where, you know, it seems to be a community that has embraced its, you know, its cultural heritage and its history, and it's really moving forward in a positive light. Thank you.
Kelly, do you have a question?
Given the daily challenges that our teachers and staff face with student behavior and the lack of consequences for their actions, such as disrupting classrooms, physical altercations, bullying, and disrespect, what steps would you take to implement change to the current culture and morale of our school community?
Yeah, so this is, you know, and it doesn't make it any easier by saying, you know, Mashpee is not the only community that is seeing this. It really is a cross-section of where we have gone, especially in post-COVID, with our society. So we started seeing an increase in these types of behaviors around 2010. After COVID and that separation, we saw a drastic increase. And then, you know, the year before last, you know, the state, the legislature passed a law limiting the use of suspension as a punishment, which also infected what, and handcuffed what administrators were able to do. But this is not a simple problem. It's, it is a complex problem, and we, anytime there's a complex problem, you need to look at it from multiple angles. So first and foremost, we need to create and promote a culture of respect and appreciation for each other and tolerance. Okay? So, and I know that those are part of the core values here in Mashpee, but that needs to be established, needs to be revisited daily, attached to the core values. We need to engage our student body in pushing that cultural piece and what we expect from our students, and school should be a safe haven. It should be a place where every kid is able to come to school and feel safe and able to learn. Okay? So that's one piece. The other piece is looking at behavior, and, you know, changing behavior, you know, depending on if there was trauma involved or other things involved, can be very difficult. And what I have done in Norwood is bring in more behavior, certified behavior analysts to help teachers address behavior in a positive way. You know, the, the purpose of discipline is to change behavior for positive, not necessarily to get even, and, you know, the research is out there that suspension itself does not solve it. The other thing is that we really need to invest our relationships with students, and if you think back to when you got into trouble with mom and dad and you were sent to your room or what have you, it was that relational aspect of you letting them down that caused you to reflect and change the behavior. So we need to, we need to go back to that, and the separation from COVID disrupted those connections, and students today are not feeling as connected to their school, and, you know, sometimes one or two adults, you know, in their setting can make that connection and make that difference. Okay? And then the other thing is that there, we need to understand that there are certain behaviors that are, that are not acceptable. We are not going along with this. It is not something that we want in our schools, and we're having those conversations with the students on why it's not acceptable and what it does to the learning environment and what it does to that person, either be a teacher or a fellow student, when you use that language or performed in that way. They need to understand the impact of their actions. And unfortunately, that is changing behavior, and if there is more of a background that is troublesome, be it trauma or what have you, that would take longer, but those pieces are starting to move the needle in Norwood and things that I would want to do here as well.
Thank you. You're welcome. So I'm going to start with a question in regard to cell phones. So, cell phones can serve as an essential communication tool for students or as a weapon when used to post inappropriate videos and messages on social media. What is your view on the use of cell phones by students during school, and what has been a result of student performance from implementing that view in the past?
Yeah, so this is, again, another complex problem. We've given, you know, in some cases, nine- and 10-year-olds, you know, extremely powerful computers that can go all over the world and around in a few seconds, right? And, you know, that can be very addictive and distracting to our student body, so minimally, what I, what we have done in Norwood and had some success with it, you know, and we're also struggling with the fact that parents today want 24/7 access to their children, and we can debate whether that's good or bad, but ultimately, we need to make sure that those phones are not disrupting the educational process. What we do in Norwood is that those phones are basically, I don't know if you remember the calculator pocket things that you had? Basically, the kids are supposed to come in and put their, put their phones in those pockets, and they're not to be used during instruction. Now, obviously, you know, lunch, you know, breakfast, those non, you know, those non-instructional times, kids do get to use them. By using, by implementing that, we have seen a slight, well, we've seen the increase in, in, you know, we've seen a decrease in distractions in the classrooms, from cell phones ringing and that sort of thing, and we've seen a decrease of kids posting things during the day. The reality is, is that come 2:30, 2:00, whenever they get on the bus and go home, all that stuff happens again. So, but the other piece of it is we need to purposely teach children how to use these appropriately and how to use them appropriately, and what is good and kind and tolerant behavior that we should be using 24/7, not just for the six and a half hours you're in our school building. There are districts who are looking at totally banning phones for the entire school day. There, you know, there are grants that would need to be a conversation district-wide to whether that was appropriate or not, but if that's a direction that we should explore, then I would be willing to explore it. I tell parents repeatedly, there is no reason why that phone needs to go to bed with them. It is not a teddy bear. It can sit downstairs off. And ultimately, you know, it's twofold. We need to get people to behave and understand a culture of respect and tolerance and belonging, you know, and what that means and what the actions mean and how to use them, how to use the phones appropriately, as well as ensure that our education process is happening.
Just a follow-up. So how in your curriculum or in your programs are you accomplishing what you just talked about?
Which, which part?
As far as the students' understanding, the appropriate use of them, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, so there's many things. We have a advisory that we do that with. We also have student clubs. We have peer leaders who are also going around and doing instruction and events around those cultural pieces. And, you know, the other piece is that we, we have got core values that are repeated and are used daily, not just as a sign on a wall, but we are remembering, we are pointing to them, and those are part of our culture.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just follow up to that?
Yes.
Now, if we did ban cell phones, you know you're going to have the parents backlash, you're going to have all of that. I can probably tell you everybody in this room, but a couple of us have, you know, went through a whole entire school system in our careers where we didn't have phones. There's phones on the wall, there's phones in the office.
Right.
So there is way around it. So how would you, how would you educate the parents? Because we can educate the kids, but how are you going to educate the parents of, hey, you do have that 24/7 access to your child, you just can't call this.
Right, right. Well, I think, you know, it starts off, so any new initiative has to start with a communication plan, a strategy on how to get it across. Okay? So we need to identify, what are the key things we want the community to understand? How is it best to communicate that and get that across? And it is going to be a process. Where things have failed is when we have not done enough of the process of communicating and educating. So we need to have a very clear, consistent vision for what that is and why that is, you know, why this is a problem and what we're going to do about it and how we're going to get there. Okay? So, and that could take, you know, and again, this generation of parent is looking for a different kind of communication than we were using five, even 10 years ago, right? You know, a newsletter once a month is not, is not effective. Okay? So, you know, what are the communication tools? What are the video and audio tools that we have? I am all for using, you know, a monthly talk show or something along that line, where we have a panel that will discuss things, and then people can view that when, you know, it's convenient for them. Podcasts. Everybody loves a podcast. Well, why don't we have a podcast here to communicate those important things? But we need to get strategic about why we are doing this. What are the issues that we're seeing? And, you know, it also is, you know, cell phones are also impacting mental health and, you know, and how kids are feeling about themselves, because if they're not getting this, it's almost an addictive, the need for positive response all the time, you know, bringing in mindfulness, bringing in those sorts of pieces, but looking at the, you know, the negative effects of being on a cellphone all the time. And you, you see it at the movies, or at the movies, and they're on their cell phones and not watching the movie, right? So, again, there's an addictive piece to that, and helping parents understand what skills they're missing out on and how that's impacting their ability to learn, their ability to feel connected to the school and their school community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Kathy?
Okay.
And I will just purpose this, probably will be the last question by each member in order for us to keep on the schedule.
Okay. Um, that team's set, and I'm going to pick which one I want to ask. Kind of hit on that one. So I guess I'm going to go slightly different, but same vein maybe a little bit. If a student confides in an educator or staff member about being a member of the LGBTQ community, what is the school's obligation, in your opinion?
Yeah, so, well, there isn't, there actually was, you know, the Safe Schools Act passed in 1993, and then there have been several other, you know, guidelines issued by, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about this. But as a school and as a person who loves working with kids, my first priority is their, their mental health, social, emotional safety, and physical safety, and that, that really is job one, is to make sure that those students feel that they are safe, valued, and have adults to go to. I have been that adult in the past, okay? You know, and, you know, and we need to realize that this is a, you know, adolescence is a difficult time anyways. These issues or these, you know, self-realization and growth and learning about oneself, you know, if it's not the norm, it's not an easy thing to go through. And how are we being compassionate about that? How are we making sure that they are safe? Ultimately, you know, and there's different situations, but we want to try to get them, you know, involved and, you know, talking with their family about, about these issues sooner rather than later. I have had instances where a child did not feel safe doing that, unfortunately, and those are things that we need to be aware of and guard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
Shifting gears slightly, if you were to transition into this position as interim, what supports do you anticipate needing to be successful in this position?
Yeah, so, so first and foremost, I mean, the school committee, the school committee and the superintendent really have to work as a team. Okay? There has to be clear, open lines of communication, regular communication, ensuring that you know what's going on so you're not blindsided on the soccer field, the grocery store, and I need, from the school committee, your historical and perspective, the context of the community, because I will be learning that coming in. So that is, that is very important. As far as, you know, the day-to-day operations, I'm a very experienced superintendent. I have seen basically everything at this point in time, after 23 years in administration, but still, I will need to go to you and to other stakeholders to get the context of why decisions were in place or what is really happening behind this, the story behind this story, to make sure that I'm in the best position possible to make the best decisions. And again, those are focused first on what's best for the student, what's best for our teaching staff, and what's best for the district. So that's, that's what I would need from you. You will find that I am a very open and love to have conversations, love to sit down. I have a coffee maker in my office usually, come and have coffee, very, an excellent listener, and I always want to learn. I always want to improve, and that, that is the dynamic that I break to the table.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eve, last chance.
Um...
Here comes... Here comes the fastball.
Oh, God. Not that bad. What is your stance on support for students in extracurricular activities? Is it in your plan to support the students by your attendance?
Yes, well, that's, that's actually the fun part of the job, okay, is seeing your students engaged in learning in extracurricular things that they're passionate about. You see the best in your kids, and all of the heavy lifting you do, you know, in the back room in the dark, is validated by viewing the plays and the, you know, the soccer game and those sorts of things. The problem is, the games all tend to happen at the same time, but, but going to those, and it's pretty, you know, you can, you know, the two things that I set my schedule up is to be in classrooms weekly, okay, and to be at activities weekly. That is, that, that's just, I mean, that's kind of why I got into it, to begin, you know, is for that interaction with the kids, getting to know them. You know, even as a teacher, I was going to their basketball games, I was going to the concerts. And it's a really powerful thing to be able to say, hey, you know, I saw you, and this was a great play, and you did this, and you did that. So, being able to be in that position is something that I value.
All right. Kelly?
What are some of the most significant challenges you have faced in your educational career, and how did you address them?
Do you want to see the scars too, or just the stories? You know, all right. So, yeah, there have been a lot. Probably one of, I gotta try not to get emotional, my wife tells me I can't get emotional. But we had a student-
We like emotion.
Yeah, we, we had a student murdered two years ago in Boston. He was visiting his grandparents, somebody who probably should not have been on the street, jumped out of his car and decided to shoot five bullets in his direction. Very popular kid. And when I got that call, I had, I had to pull off the road. So, so that, that was a challenge, because you have a whole school community grieving, you know, classmates, teachers, obviously, the family as well, friends of the family. It was probably, you know, and there's, unfortunately, too many of these sorts of things. But, you know, in my role as superintendent, my job was to make sure that the principal was supported as much as possible, to make sure that the supports were put in there. Now, we were in a bit of a notification lag, because an aunt had called and told the principal this had happened, but we had not heard from the mother. So, we didn't really have permission to do a lot of stuff, but still, we were planning. And the students didn't know yet, but we knew that they were gonna know pretty quick. So, you know, we obviously brought in counseling, we brought in support from other schools, we brought in all of the emotional support dogs in the area. The one thing, when you have people that are grieving, especially adolescents, they need an outlet. So, we worked with the student body to, they wanted to do something in the student's name in the school, we facilitated that. We also brought the parent back in, was a single, single parent, supported her as much as we could, made sure that she had what she needed, and kept bringing her back for these things that the kids were doing in her son's name. You know, back to the social media problem, this is not a kid who was involved in any sort of bad activities, but people assumed, because someone who dealt drugs decided to shoot at this child, that this child must be involved in drugs, so it's not just a kid issue. Sometimes we have adults that aren't behaving well, and I did call those people and ask them to stop it. Because this, this child did not deserve to have his name misaligned in that way. So, that, that was, you know, a pretty, pretty low day. The other, you know, the other one was, you know, when we were going for an operational override, we were in a position, we did not, when I got to Norwood, we did not have funds to adequately provide modern curriculum for our kids, okay? So, I had to develop, basically, you know, with my team, two budgets, and accurately describe what that would look like. It would have involved closing a school if we did not get that override at that point in time, and what it would look like if we got the money, which would be increasing, you know, opportunities for AP, opportunities for science and STEM programming, all these things. We had to basically, you know, live two sides of the coin, and that was, I don't think there was a week that was shorter than 60 hours for the entire year. So, that was particularly challenging.
Thank you.
I could, after so many years, I could probably come up with a couple more, but I probably won't do it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Brian?
What is one of the greatest challenges or threats facing our education system today, and how will you change that?
Yeah, so I think one of the, so there's several. I think one of the biggest is issues around mental health, and unfortunately, I don't think that's one that the schools can solve all on its own. There are structural issues around, you know, the, you know, enough people to provide mental health support, even in the system, then there are insurance issues with that. So, I don't think it's something the school can handle all on its own. What we have done is, we have done a couple of things. First of all, we've partnered with the Health Department to create a mental health task force, and through that, and there's, there's members of the school committee on that, there's members of the town council on that, there's other, some people from faith-based organizations on that, working to try to support, and there's, one of the bigger pieces is, we have student representation on that, and student groups at our high school and our middle school working on those things. So, they're putting together programs. One of the big things is, we were able to get grant funding to do a referral service, which is called Interface, for the entire town. We monitor how that is being used. The other piece is that we got grant funding, the town got grant funding to do mental health first aid, and we are training all of, we started with the principals and the counseling staff, but we're doing that with all of our teachers, to have all of them trained in mental health first aid. I would like to eventually get some of our peer leaders in that training as well, because sometimes kids will talk to them, and maybe they can just refer to some of the adults. But to ensure that we're in a position to support kids, to make sure we don't have any travesties. Thank you.
So, the Mashpee School Committee has budgeted in the forthcoming school year for a part-time DEIB analyst to mine district data for insights on fostering a more equitable and inclusive learning environment for all students, staff, and families. How would you guide this effort, and what would you look for in the Mashpee data that comes out?
Yeah, so, and we have done this, in that we actually had Mass Insight come in and do a whole equity audit, which included, you know, the data diving. What, you know, we looked for were discrepancies in performance or access for marginalized groups. Then, from that, I mean, you wanna, you know, drill down deeper and get in, try to find the root causes of why those, why those disparities are happening. And then, once you've determined root causes, then you can start talking about a plan for changing the outcome. So, you know, I have probably more questions about what, who this person is, and whether they're, it's a company we're hiring to do in, or whether it's our own employee, or what have you. But those are the pieces, and once you start looking at data, and you start trying to dig down and drill down further, you tend to find more and more things that are, that are going on. When I first came to, to Norwood, there was a huge discrepancy in people of color and suspension, and we addressed that by bringing in EDL and doing an implicit bias training. The other piece of that was that we didn't have an in-school suspension program, so everybody was out of school, out of school or nothing, basically. So, we had to structurally, we had to structurally fix, and I had to advocate, before getting the override, had to advocate for that position, so that we weren't sending kids home to eat Captain Crunch and play video games. So, but that's, that's how I would, I would look at that position at this point. And again, that, you know, the next piece of that would probably be looking at curriculum, and making sure that that is culturally proficient, and, you know, and again, I don't quite know the parameters of this person. And then, you know, and I don't know whether this is in the job description or not, but are we running focus groups and surveys of, of parents to get data, get that kind of data to look at our equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging?
We have a few more minutes. Kathy, you have another question?
So, you've kind of touched on this a little bit, about communicating with families. I guess I'm wondering how you would propose to improve family engagement in combating things such as racism and bullying, or considering that previous efforts we've undertaken here, such as speakers, one-night programs, webinars, like, we've tried a lot of different things. They mostly are touching the families affected by these issues, and not necessarily those who might benefit from attending. Have you had any strategies or ways that you've been able to engage those people who really could benefit more from being at those types of programs?
Yes, but, so, yes, but I think families are more over-scheduled than they ever have been, and this is, this is, and, you know, until it's something that's really affecting you, they might not necessarily change your schedule. But what we have done, basically, is twofold. One is, we have, we'll have a series of things, and we will really front-sell that, and again, that communication strategy piece, front-sell that, what it's for, why it's important, and keep going at that until they're like, don't talk to me anymore. But, and go through that, and then the other piece is a personal phone call, you know? So, if you have, you know, let's say, your guidance counselor knows that this is an issue, and maybe, you know, and in some instances, you know, you know, you either have kids or have seen them live, right? You know, it's like, how was school? Fine. How was your day? Great. You know, this is, this is all you get. But if that person that's in school is seeing something, and they make that personal phone call, saying, hey, just so you know, you know, Jimmy is having, seeming to have an issue around this, there is a program we're bringing in. And then, the other thing is, once that program happens, if someone can't make it, can they get it some other way? The problem is, with outside speakers, they don't necessarily always want you to tape it and play it over again, but there's no reason why, you know, the school system couldn't do a table discussion of what they learned in that and put that out there, okay? So, how are we following up with that in a way that parents can access it kind of, you know, on their own? So, it really is, you know, just putting a program, really need to think out of the box on how we're doing that, because the box no longer exists.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dana, you have a question?
No, I think my, my third question has been answered throughout the way, so, thank you.
All right. David, do you have another question at this point?
No, I do not.
All right. I'm not sure which one I'm doing here. Kelly, do you have a question?
No, mine has all been answered.
Brian?
No.
So, I wanna go with my last question. So, what strategies do you plan to use to help alleviate the fear and anxiety related to change, as students, faculty, administration, parents, and other stakeholders transition to your leadership as interim superintendent? I know you've touched on a little bit of it-
Right.
-but if you can put it in a cohesive kind of-
Yeah, so, you know, I think first and foremost, you know, we all, hopefully me, but me especially, need to be cognizant and aware that, you know, the current superintendent has been here for 29 years as a teacher, a principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and she's well-known. I mean, there are people who have not known anybody else, right? And, you know, when that, there is a sense of loss when someone retires, especially someone who's been in the district as long as this person has. So, first, embracing that, embracing that legacy is important as someone coming in. The other thing is, you know, being present and being, you know, a good listener and someone who is approachable. I pride myself on being an approachable person that people connect to quickly and easily. If that doesn't work, I have candy in my office, but, you know, literally, that is an important piece, and being out there. And there's, you know, official times when you're, you know, you're running a discussion group, and then there's, there's less formal times, like, you know, I'm at the play, and I'm in, and I'm in the lobby. You know, people wanna, wanna talk or meet me, or whatever, and that's, that's, you know, take advantage of those, as well as eating, you know, a superintendent's coffee and those sort of things. But being out in the community, being visible, being present, being available, those are the things that you wanna do. Normally, what I do, and I, you know, our timeline is a little off, is I like to come into schools when they're still in session, before teachers are taking their, you know, their summer break, or their summer recovery period, as I like to call it. Because then, you know, school ends, and they don't, they don't, you know, there isn't this mystery of who the, who the big mean guy is coming in is gonna be the superintendent. I'm really not mean. My daughter makes a joke that, you know, I'm really, I'm really imposing until I start talking, so. That's what, that's what your first board does for you, right? So, but being present, being available, listening, I'm always trying to listen to learn, and, you know, there will be a good amount to learn about Mashpee, and how Mashpee has done things, every district does things differently, and a deep respect for, you know, the art and science of teaching, and the hard work, valuable work that it is. Those things come through in my interactions with people. So, some of that, you know, I will invite staff to come in and sit with me, if I'm lucky enough to sit here with you, over the summer. If they wanna come in for an hour and just, and just talk and meet me, then that's great, I'm here. You know, I, my, my point of view on the super-tenancy is that my job is to make sure that that classroom is functioning at the highest level possible. It's my job to support, you know, the instruction, the learning, the culture in that classroom. That's the most important part of the whole system, not the superintendent's office. People are usually a little, you know, look at me a little funny when I say that, but, but that's what we're all here for. And once I'm able to deliver that, and it's, and it's not just words, it's actions as well, once I'm able to deliver that, then that fear of, usually goes away pretty quick.
All right. Very good.
I got a question. One popped in my head. Can I ask?
Sure.
All right. You said you did your research about Mashpee. Mashpee is a very diverse community. Unfortunately, our staff does not reflect that.
Yeah.
How would you, as, you know, the potential interim superintendent-
Yeah.
-go out there and look for people that look like our kids-
Yeah.
-that walk into the school every day?
Yeah, and that is, again, another complex problem, let alone just staffing in general, and finding qualified people to work in our schools is becoming a problem. But, you know, the reality is, is that people who decide to become teachers or educators usually have done well and felt comfortable in school, and the historical piece of this is not, that has not always been people of color in marginalized communities, right? So, we need to fix that problem, so that there are more people who want to come in and become educators, okay? So, that's a long-term process, right? And the work on DEIB is central to fixing that part of the problem. The other thing we need to do is, we need, we can't just, oh, we're looking for people. I mean, I can remember my first few years as a building principal, and having 400 people apply for a fifth-grade teaching position. Lucky if you get 10 now, and you're lucky if five of them actually have the credentials to do the work, right? So, we need to go out, and we need to recruit at colleges, and, you know, try to bring those people in. So, one of the things that, from our equity audit that came out that we needed to work on is exactly what we're talking about right now, trying to bring more representation into our school buildings, and I can tell you that does make a huge difference. I can tell you about the kindergartner, we had a young man of color come in and become a paraprofessional, and we had a young black boy who stopped when this gentleman started and said, you look just like me, and gave him a huge hug. It makes, it makes a huge difference. So, the one thing that, so we started looking at our hiring practices, and we changed them slightly, where we're actually kind of doing quick video introduction meetings, meetings with candidates, just to ensure we're not eliminating people that might be representative unknowingly, and that has increased our numbers. I think when I got there, there were two people of color working in our buildings. We're now up to about 15 or 16 in a couple of years. The other thing we need to look at is developing our own, okay? So, you know, we have Cape- So, you know, we have Cape Cod Community College nearby, right? So, you know, if we have people that are interested in education, let's get them, you know, into a program, develop our own program, where we're looking to develop paraprofessionals, and from there, we work to develop them into teachers, so they can earn a living, get, I'm not quite sure of the contract situation, but maybe get funding towards that, but really start to develop our own. The other thing that we, we are doing is that we have, you know, we have signing days for everything. I'm sure you probably are doing signing days for educators, but we do that, we try to hire those kids who want to go into education to come work our summer programs. Okay? And that's, that's twofold. They're getting experience, working in a schoolish setting, they're getting to apply what they learned at college, okay? And hopefully, we've got a hook into them by the time they're a senior. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Time for a closing remark.
Closing remark. Okay, so I guess I'd like to, like to start, are there any questions that you have follow-up on or I didn't answer well enough? I want to make sure you have, you know, this is not, this is going to be a tough decision and deliberation, but is there any other questions that you have that you want to follow up on or?
All members, anyone?
Just a quick one, sorry. Yeah, we kind of talked a lot about the students, and Dawn's last question, I think, kind of started to touch on faculty engagement and involvement. I guess my question is just, could you elaborate a little bit more about how you see yourself interacting with your administrators, as well as, you know, all the way down to your paraprofessionals and volunteers in the building? Like, what do you see?
Yeah, so first and foremost, every single person in this organization is important. Everybody has a role to play for the whole team to be successful, right? So that, that is a fundamental core belief, and, you know, so, so that's first and foremost. But, you know, meeting with union leadership from various, you know, from the custodians to the paraprofessionals to the teachers, I don't know if you have a unit B for administrators, I think you do, but them as well, you know, monthly or as needed, if more than that, to ensure clear communication, taking part in faculty meetings where it's appropriate, ensuring that that is there, listening. The one thing that I do in, in Norwood is I have a staff advisory, which is kind of, for the most part, it's the, it's the union reps from each building come and they meet with me once every other month, okay? I would do the same with, with students as well. I'd like to see a leadership group of students that I'm meeting with at the high school, the middle school, and maybe fifth graders at Coombs? No, here, Kushten, okay? So that, but, you know, by doing that, you know, and then just visiting classrooms, it's kind of, you know, I can tell you this, you know, when I first, and I, you know, replaced someone who had been in Norwood for a long, but when I first walked into classrooms, everyone would stop and just look at me. I just, I'm, I'm not there to interrupt the lesson, I'm just there to get a sense for what's going on and to see how I can support people in their role as teachers. And once that, once they're used to seeing me and me saying, "Hey, you know, I loved how you did this, or you were really great with that kid," that gets around, right? You know, there are times when you have to have hard conversations as well. One of the things that I take great pride in is, you know, part of the observation process is walk in the building and doing observations with the principal and talking about what we're seeing in the classroom and what's working and what's not working, and that does two things. I'm getting a sense of what's going on in the classroom, and that person is getting a sense for what, what kind of instructional strategy, what kind of direction and feedback they should be given, because, you know, your, your building leaders are where the rubber meets the road. They're there every day, and they have to make sure that the teachers are supported, the curriculum's being followed, and all those sorts of things. So by building your building leaders, you really build, and that's something that I take great pride in. And again, mentoring principals, and I know that you're going to have a new high school principal here, assistant principal as well, and then one of your elementary principals is going to go into their second year. That is, that is something that I have been committed to for a long period of time as leader, you know, in principal's associations, as well as an adjunct professor, and as well as a supervisor in the licensing program for the state, the state principal's association.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. In the instance of time, I'll forego any additional questions that I have until a later date where it may be appropriate, but I will ask for...
Okay. All right, well, I want to thank all of you. Oop, can I do a quick close or no?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I want to thank all of you for, for meeting with me and inviting me here. It truly has been a pleasure. Hopefully, I've kind of outlined my core values and skills that make me a strong candidate. I have a highly experienced district and school leader. It would be an honor to lead the Mashpee schools. Core values, just to reiterate, you know, educating the whole child, creating a learning environment where all students can be successful and have a future going forward, a collaborative and adaptive leadership style, you know, I really enjoy coaching and developing others and developing a strong leadership team, building these high-functioning teams, you know, ensures buy-in, success, and continued improvement ongoing, even after I may or may not disappear, make decisions that are in the best interest of, of students and teachers in the district, in that order, accessible to all stakeholders. I have an open-door policy. I return phone calls, I interact with people, and if there's something that's not going well, then I'm more than willing to initiate a conversation about that, if it's in the best interest of our kids. Personal attributes: trustworthy, honest, very compassionate, empathetic, caring, and I value individuals' contributions to the system. You know, as far as if I was going to highlight three major accomplishments in the last three years, passing two overrides, the communication and teamwork that was involved with that, building a strong leadership team, and a total refinement of a curriculum on a K through 12 basis. So, again, thank you for the time. I really appreciate meeting all of you and hope you enjoyed meeting me as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in. Charlie, did you want to...
Put me in the holding pen?
We'll, we'll start in just a minute. We have one of the members step out. All right, I'd like to welcome Dr. McCall. You can do your intro remarks, and then we'll get into the questions.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Renee McCall. I am super excited to be here this evening.
Can I ask you just to speak up a little?
A little louder.
Yes, please.
The microphones are just for the TV.
Okay, so just use my teacher's voice.
Yes.
Got you. Okay. I am Renee McCall. I am very happy to be here this evening. At the risk of sounding cliche, I have to share that I have always known that I would be a teacher. After spending about 10 years in the field of business, particularly accountancy, I knew that I had the opportunity to return to school for my master's in teaching. And so after receiving my master's, I then had the opportunity to lead a class as a substitute teacher in Boston Public Schools in a sub-separate math classroom. Even though that was a tough assignment, I really enjoyed it, and I knew that I wanted to continue as a high school math teacher. So I had done that for a number of years, and then had the opportunity to lead as a middle school principal. Keep in mind that I was on the high school level, didn't have much experience with middle schoolers, but was really open to the challenge. I fell in love with that age group and then had the opportunity, was tapped to lead the turnaround efforts at a school in Boston, Excel High School in South Boston. And so I led the turnaround effort there for four years, then had the opportunity to lead the teaching and learning department in the Newton Public Schools, and that's where I am currently employed at this time. Again, I'm happy to be here this evening, and I look forward to your questions.
All right, thank you very much. Kathy, I'll start off with you again.
Okay, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. Kind of start with, I guess, maybe an easy one, but what are your thoughts on banned books, given the current national and local discussions that kind of are permeating school districts and communities?
Well, my number one concern here is to make sure that we're not stifling students' creativity and creative thinking and problem-solving. What immediately comes to mind for me is the danger of a single story, and when we just have one story, we are leaning on assumptions, and when we do that, we may lead to making decisions that are incomplete and imperfect. And so with that in mind, we want to ensure we are balancing those concerns of the community, and we also want to be sure that we are doing our due diligence to ensure that we have a policy in place when books are challenged. We want to ensure that we have a committee that includes many voices, voices of the staff, students, as well as families. We really want to hear what the concerns are so that we might be able to talk through those issues. Again, we want to ensure that there is an opportunity for students to explore different perspectives, and when students have the ability to do so, it widens their understanding of the world, and they're able to develop their own ideas and opinions about different matters. And so with that in mind, I would really want to be sure that we are taking a close look at challenges and bans in particular, so that we have different voices at the tables to really balance, again, that educational opportunity and flexibility where students can see themselves in the literature, making sure that they are open to other perspectives, which is very important, and we also want to ensure that we have the partnership with the community members and families so that we can have open and ongoing dialogue, and we can address those fears and concerns that might arise with those questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, you have a question? Of course. So, good evening. I hope this is your case. Thank you for being here. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. My question is, in this role as interim superintendent, what will be your approach for understanding our community and the needs of this particular district?
I think in the first 100 days, it's really important for me to listen and learn. Of course, I'll come in with my own ideas, but I also want to be sure that I'm building on the solid foundation that has already been established. Again, I think it's important to hear from the different and various constituencies, including students. Again, it is important that we hear different voices. Again, I would be new to the community, so there's a lot of learning that would need to take place, but I would also leverage the expertise that's already in the room. And I would also lean heavily on the talented team that is already in place here. Again, there are already solid structures that are in place. When you take a look at the MCAS data specifically, we're seeing that on the grade levels three through eight, that we're slightly behind the state in both math and ELA, but just ahead in science. So we can share best practices about what's working in those various content areas. And then additionally, on the high school level, we're seeing that in terms of English-language arts, that students are outperforming the state, and their student growth percentile is also above 50, which is excellent. And so I would say that I would continue to listen and learn, leverage the data, really make data-informed decisions that are going to be best for students and also for teachers. We could look heavily at instruction and understand what is taking place in the classrooms to ensure that it is engaging, rigorous, and relevant. I would engage in conversations with teachers and families around culturally responsive teaching and understand what's happening there. So again, I think it would be an opportunity to listen and learn, share ideas that I have as we co-construct our next steps to continue again and build off of the work that has already been started here in the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eve, do you have a question yet?
I need to find it. It's in here. All right. What is your stance on support for students in extracurricular activities? Is it your plan to support the students by your attendance?
Yes, and I would say that I would be open to having a student advisory group, and I know that in my previous district in Boston, whenever a student had an idea about a particular club that didn't exist in the school, we really were open to ensuring that students had the opportunity to be expressive and to feel like they're a part of the school community, have a sense of belonging. So I would say that if students have ideas about expanding offerings in clubs, I would be open to that, but also being visible and present at those athletic events, at the musicals, at the arts events, making sure, again, that I am a part of the community and students see me as someone that is approachable and open to hearing their feedback, because I think that we can continue to get better together and that students have a voice and they, I would do want to be sure, to be sure that they feel empowered in shaping their educational experience here in Mashpee.
All right, very good. Kelly, you have a question?
What strategies would you use to engage and communicate with the various stakeholders in our community, such as the students, parents, teachers, and the remainder of our community?
One of the things that we're doing currently in my district, we use Talking Points with Families, and it's an app where there's a two-way exchange between teachers, the district, and families in a language that they prefer to use, and it is a texting application. But what we're doing this year for the coming year is exploring using Parent Square, where you have all of the information in one place at one time, so it's sort of a one-stop shop. So you'll have the school newsletters, teacher letters to families. You can engage in text, two-way text messages with families. So families wouldn't have to go to school messenger or go to the specific school website to look at their newsletters, it would all be in Parents Square, so that's something that we're exploring right now. So I would engage in exploring that as a possibility, but also understanding what currently exists in Mashpee, whether it's, again, the newsletters from the school. I would also be interested in having weekly newsletters as well, both to families, as well as the staff and students, of course. And I would also engage in phone calls. I don't know if Mashpee is a, a district that also encourages home visits, but that's something that I've also done as a school principal, again, ensuring that there is that connection, the personal connection with families, and ensuring that they also, again, see themselves as partners in this, in their students' educational journey. So I would try to figure out what is happening here in Mashpee already, but also think about ways that we might be able to streamline the process of communication, but also ensuring that it is in a manner and mode and language that they prefer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, you have a question?
What knowledge do you have on the town of Mashpee and/or the history of this area?
Excuse me. So I noticed that with every school committee meeting, you start with a land acknowledgement about the rich history of the Wapinock Tribe in this area for over 10,000 years. And so I know that, that traditions, cultures, and celebrations are interwoven into the fabric of this community, and so that is celebrated, and I really appreciate that. I know that, again, there is an opportunity for families to be engaged with schools, and so to have that two-way dialogue is important, so that we can celebrate and affirm families' rich traditions and histories, so that they feel seen, valued, and heard. That's really important. So that is what I know about Mashpee and its history.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I want to dive into probably a controversial issue, which is regarding cell phones, which concern is an essential communication tool for the students, or as a weapon when used to post inappropriate videos or messages on social media. What is your view on the use of cell phones by students during school? What is your view on the use of cell phones by students during school, and what has been the result of the student performance from implementing that view at your current schools?
It's a complicated issue, as we know, and it is something that many districts are grappling with right now. We are taking a look at that in the district that I'm currently in right now, and it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We have piloted, we were able to receive a grant from DESI, and we're piloting both an approach on the middle school level that differs from the approach that we're taking on the high school level. So in middle school, we are piloting the yonder pouches, where students place their phones into a pouch that they cannot access during the day, but they have possession of their phones. And then you, at the end of the day, you would have that unlocked by an administrator or a teacher as students exit for the day. And there has been resounding positive feedback from the teachers, and we are going through the process of helping parents understand the importance of students having fewer distractions in the classroom so that they are focused on their education. So again, involving parents and families in that process of understanding why this approach is being taken is really important to have their buy-in. And on the high school level, what we are currently doing is using the, it's the shoe horn, not the shoe horn, but where you place the shoes over your closet door. So essentially, where students are just placing their cell phones into each of those pockets when they enter the classroom, and then they would take those as they exit the classroom. In high school, they are able to use their cell phones in the hallways, in the cafeteria, at the beginning of the school day. And so they're able to place those in those pockets, it's the shoe pockets, that they place their cell phones in and then obtain them at the end of class. So I would say that based on those two different strategies we are using in our current district, we are still, you know, gathering data, trying to figure out if this is something that we can explore with other schools, because we've only done it at one middle school and one high school, and we have four middle schools and two high schools where I'm currently employed. And so we would have to do some more research on that and also, again, have students' voices at the table as we talk about the importance of why there needs to be fewer distractions in the classroom. But also, cell phones can be a useful tool. As students are doing research or exploring different topics and ideas, as they're working on projects with their peers in the classroom, they could use that as a resource if they don't have a laptop or access to any other device that would allow them to access the internet. So I would say that also helping students understand the importance of how to effectively use social media and their cell phones is really important. So I would say taking a proactive approach versus just merely reacting to situations that arise would be really important. And so I think that building digital citizenship, that's something that you can work on during morning meetings or advisory. Again, having students' voices at the table during student, during the student advisory group meetings is also important. Again, it takes a concerted effort. It's not something that schools can do alone. We need the buy-in from the families, so that families are also reinforcing those messages at home. So it is a community initiative that needs to be underscored, again, in both places to make sure we're sending a common message to our students about the importance of effectively using technology in the classroom and beyond.
Just a quick follow-up. What has been the response from parents who now, based on what I'm hearing you say, lose immediate access to their students?
Right. We had heard that families want to be, to ensure that they have access to their students at all times, but then I mentioned earlier about the use of Parents' Square that we're hoping to implement next year. And so if there is an emergency or an urgent matter, we could place that message urgently on Parents' Square, and parents would know immediately about what's going on. And so, again, it is constantly educating both families and students about the importance of minimizing the distractions, because that then also has an impact on students, I would say, their levels of anxiety or depression connected to just feeling, it can be an addiction, actually, to just always be glued to your cellphone. And so I think that parents will have concerns, but we also had a number of parents who were supporting the initiatives that we were piloting this year as well. So you will definitely have those families with questions around, well, I want to be in constant contact with my student, but again, engaging in dialogue around the importance of staying engaged in the learning is really important because we're in the business of teaching and learning and keeping our kids safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bethany?
Okay, let's switch gears a little bit here. If a student confides in an educator, staff, faculty member about being a member of the LGBTQ community, what is the school's main priority in that instance?
I think it's important to maintain the student's right to privacy and confidentiality, number one. I think that it's also important that we take a look at students' sense of belonging to ensure that they feel a part of this community, a part of their classroom. I think it's important to take a look at our curriculum, as we talked earlier about banned books, really keeping in mind that we want to ensure that we have a wide range of offerings for our students to explore. It's important that they see themselves in the texts, that they are not alone in what they're experiencing. I would also want to ensure that they have the level of support that they need and, again, engaging in those two-way conversations to make sure that there is at least one adult in the building that they feel comfortable with. It's also important to be proactive in building awareness of other students and teachers and staff, everyone actually, who is working with the students, to ensure that we have the appropriate language, common language that we are using, again, that they are able to feel that they're able, again, to support the students. And so I think priority of privacy and confidentiality is key. I also think, again, that we want to ensure that we support a culture of inclusion in the Mashpee Public Schools, again, that all students see themselves as a part of this community, they are valued, they are seen, and they are heard. You're welcome.
Just a quick follow-up on that. Do you encourage students to confide with their parents?
If they are comfortable to do so, yes. There may be instances where a student may feel unsafe to share with their families at the point in time that they have shared it with a staff person, but through conversations with the students, perhaps they would be at a different point at the end of that conversation. So I'd really rely on how the student is feeling and, again, respecting their right to privacy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
If you were to transition to this position, what support do you anticipate needing to be successful in the interim position?
I would want to make sure that I would have open communication with each person on this school committee. Would want to be sure that, again, your expectations of what a successful first-year superintendent would be like, I would want to ensure that I am meeting those expectations. So I would also want to ensure that I'm informing you of what's happening on a day-to-day basis here in the Mashpee Public Schools, whether it is with instruction, academics, athletics, whatever it might be, that we are engaged in conversation. So I would hope that we are committed to building a solid working relationship. Additionally, I would say that as a first-year superintendent, I would like to have a mentor. I think it would be important to lean on not only my professional network that I have established, but also a mentor, particularly someone who has experience with schools in this particular area. And so I would want to be able, again, to lean on them, as well as leveraging my experiences and my lived experiences to make sure, again, that I am meeting the needs of both the school committee as well as the broader community and that our students are thriving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eve, do you have a question?
No, no more at this time.
All right. Kelly?
Given the daily challenges that teachers and staff face with student behavior and the lack of consequences for their actions, such as disrupting classrooms, physical altercations, bullying, and disrespect, what steps would you implement to change the current culture and morale of the school community?
I would first start with understanding the level of engagement that is taking place in the classrooms. I believe that if students are engaged and feel challenged by the curriculum, that you would have fewer distractions. I don't know the level of distractions that currently take place or the outcomes of some of the behaviors here in the Mashpee Public Schools, but I do believe that if there is strong tier-one instruction taking place in every classroom every day, that students are going to rise to the level of expectation that we set for them. And when we do that, we, I think, would cut down on the number of incidents of disrespect that you were talking about earlier. Again, I think it's important that we have strong relationships between students and teachers. When we think about the foundation of culturally responsive teaching, it's really grounded in strong relationships, where teachers are leveraging the experiences of our students and then elevating and centering that in the lessons that we teach every day. I think it's important, again, that teachers also have strong relationships with the families so that we can engage in conversations about what might be happening outside of the schoolroom. And so, again, if there is challenge in the classroom, students see themselves, again, in the curriculum, they feel connected to the lessons that they're learning on a daily basis, and that families and teachers, as well as the school, are thinking about the strengths of the students and then leveraging and building off of those strengths. I think that will address some of the issues that you just talked about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
What is one of the greatest challenges or threats facing our education system today, and how will you change that?
What comes to mind for me is the persistent opportunity gap that exists for certain subgroups of students, particularly when we think about our black and brown students who might be performing behind other subgroups of students. It makes me think about what is happening in the classroom, this is just in general, what is happening in the classroom to address some of the students' concerns. Again, if we're thinking about starting from a strength-based approach, students then, I think, would feel valued. Secondly, I think that if teachers are, again, connected with the students, they're better understanding what their needs are. That's also something where, when we're thinking about planning and strong tier-one instruction, that teachers are addressing those particular needs of students. So I think that as we continue to think about ways that teachers and students are in relationship with one another, thinking about the instructional core as well, that as teachers are engaged with the curriculum and fully understand the curriculum and its needs, they're able to make adjustments to meet the needs of the students, students then would feel more connected to the curriculum, feel more connected to the teachers, and I think that that would help address some of those concerns.
Thank you.
So the Mashpee School Committee has budgeted in the forthcoming school year for a part-time DEIB analyst to mine district data for insights on fostering a more equitable and inclusive learning environment for all students, staff, and families. How would you guide this effort, and what would you look for in the resulting Mashpee data?
I think this question also relates to the question that Brian was just asking in terms of the greatest obstacle or challenge, because, again, as we think about ways that we can leverage students' strengths, we do want to mine that data. And the important part of the data extends beyond just quantitative data. There is power in qualitative data as well. As students have the opportunity to tell their stories and share their experiences, whether that's through a survey or focus groups, I think it's really important that we're getting that street-level data to understand what's happening, how are students experiencing the Mashpee Public Schools on a daily basis. So we could have assumptions about ways that we might be able to address concerns, but without the voices of the students, again, through those surveys or focus groups, we don't know exactly what the issues are. And so I would say that looking at both quantitative and qualitative data would be very important for students, number one, but also hearing from families as well. And maybe families are not responsive to surveys, so we have to think about ways to creatively get their input and hear what they have hopes and desires for their children. So we want to hear from them as well. And then as we think about a commitment to continuous improvement, we want to ensure that we're providing our teachers with the professional learning they need to best understand how to unpack the data and make decisions that are going to be key to their instruction that would improve student outcomes. So I would take a look at that qualitative data, hearing from the voices of students, taking a look at MCAS, of course, but ongoing diagnostic assessments. I'm not sure what Mashpee currently uses, but in the district I am currently in, we use iReady for ELA, and we're exploring that for math as well. And so we would take a look at that level of data. We'd take a look at attendance, what's happening there. I will say the graduation rate for the Mashpee Public Schools is actually pretty high, so that's another data point that we could take a look at, understanding what students' next steps are beyond high school, figuring ways that we can support them beyond the high school year. So I would say that those data pieces would be ones that I would take a look at.
I just want to probe one part of your response. So we do a annual survey of students and families, and we get, obviously, a fairly high percentage participation rate on most of the grades, but we do struggle to consistently engage and get responses from parents. How would you improve that?
Inviting them in. I think it's important to think about ways, well, also hearing from parents, what would they prefer? Maybe some parents would prefer a virtual meeting, but I do know, based on my experience as a high school principal, inviting families in, providing childcare coverage as families are engaged in a conversation about needs for their students is important. I know that when meetings ran long, we provided dinner for families as they came in. Again, we want parents and families to understand that they are partners in this work and make sure and find ways that we can connect with them is really important. I talked about Parents' Square, that could be a two-way communication channel where we're hearing back from families. But again, I would want to understand what works best for families, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. So it might have to be a virtual option or in-person option, but I do know that in particular grade levels, some families are not responding to surveys, and that's okay. They may forget, in their email, it gets dropped down to the bottom of their email list, so they just forget about that with all else that's going on in their lives. So we have to find more creative measures to hear from our families.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy?
I kind of touched on my last, like, official question, so I'm going to ask one a little different than I did ask the previous candidate. In terms of, like, relations with, like, the faculty and staff, how do you see yourself, you know, from administration all the way down to paraprofessionals and volunteers in the buildings, how do you see your relationship building with them, and what is your role in terms of, you know, super, like, how are you going to put yourself in that position?
Yeah. I mean, the beauty of Mashpee, I would say, is that it feels like a manageable number where you can know every single staff person by name. And I believe in the power of teams, so I would hope that professional learning communities are already established here, where I would be visible in those meetings. I think that would be really important. I want to be sure that teachers understand that I believe that teachers are our most valuable asset. They are front and center with our students every single day, and I believe that they also, again, if they establish those high expectations with our students, students are going to work hard to reach those expectations. So I would make that a priority, to establish those relationships with principals. There are three, which is fantastic. I feel like I could get to know them really well, as well as the central staff, and then working my way down into the classrooms. I believe in also, again, district walkthroughs is something that we do on a probably monthly or quarterly basis, really thinking about, again, both formal and informal ways to have touchpoints with teachers and staff. And I would want to be in the classrooms, again, to engage in two-way conversations and coaching, and not as an evaluative measure. I don't want teachers to say, oh, here's the superintendent, there has to be something wrong, why is she here? No. I want to make sure that students and teachers see me as a partner, as a coach, as a mentor, as, you know, someone who really wants the best for both all students and as well as helping teachers grow and reach the next level. So I would say making sure that I'm visible, both in the classroom, in the hallways, at the sporting events, all of the events, families, again, feeling that I am approachable is also really important to me. Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Dan?
So I think my third question you have answered along the way, so I'm going to shift it up just a little bit. Can you provide some examples or your history with how you've built a strong fiscal district and what that means to you, and any challenges that you faced, or what you could see as fiscal challenges for our district?
So we have an assistant superintendent for finance in our district, but we work more as a collaborative team. While I have my own budget in the Teaching and Learning Department, we have a $1.2 million budget that I manage. But if I lean on my experience as a principal, I had more than a $6 million budget for my school, and the majority of that related to teacher salaries and benefits. But as I think about ways to prioritize how we're going to expend our funds, really it's related to our goals that are outlined in our school improvement plan, and it has to be student-centered. So I would think about what is it that we're trying to work on, how are we trying to grow, where would we like to see progress, and then working from there, make decisions to, again, allocate those funds that would support that initiative, making sure, again, that it is student-centered and that we are grounding our decisions in data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eve, do you have any more?
Nope.
Very good. And I'll turn now to Kelly.
What are some of the most significant challenges you have faced in your educational career, and how did you address them?
I think I may have touched on this earlier, but another example that comes to mind for me, I remember my first year as a principal, I was faced with a $2 million deficit, and that was very challenging, coming into a community where you're trying to build relationships and make positive change, and then unfortunately, having to lay staff off was very difficult. But I think that I thought about ways where there was least impact on the student's experience, and so trying to trim around the edges, trying to maintain the number of teachers that we had so that we could have a manageable number of students, the ratio for teachers to students. So I would say that that was a major challenge for me as I was entering administration, and I think it's important to be open, honest, and transparent with the staff and say, hey, listen, this is what we're faced with, and unfortunately, you have to make some tough decisions. But again, keeping the best interests of students at heart, I think, is really the way to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
If selected, what would the first 100 days in the district look like? What plans or initiatives will you implement?
Listening and learning is my number-one priority here. Starting on July 1st, I think that I would open myself up to families and students and staff. I know that in some places, they do popsicles with principals or popcorn with principals. I would just try to meet families and staff and students where they are, as opposed to just opening my office for folks to come in. I'd like to go out into the community, whether that is visiting their barbecues or wherever I might be able to meet up with families, whether it's at the library or a coffee shop, whatever it might be. I do want to make sure that I'm making myself available to, again, hearing from students and families and staff. That would be critically important to me as I begin my first 100 days. But again, it is really about listening and learning. Again, I mentioned earlier that I might have ideas about things, but I do want to be sure that I'm hearing both from my central admin team, as well as principals, teachers, families, and also, again, the importance of having the student voice at the table as we make decisions that are in their best interest. So, again, meeting folks where they are, also inviting folks in, making sure that we have those opportunities to engage in dialogue.
Thank you. So before I ask my next question, I will just say that Eve is a student advisor.
Hi, Eve.
So she's participating in this and participates in her school committee meetings and has been a great asset. So I want to go a little bit into what your strategies that you plan to use to alleviate the fear and anxiety that people have about change. You know, as students, faculty, administration, parents, other stakeholders transition to your leadership as the interim superintendent, how do you make them comfortable?
Change is hard. I'll start there. And, again, I think the importance of establishing those relationships early matters. Being open, honest, and transparent, I think, goes a long way in developing trust and establishing trust. Again, I would be new to the community. I am not interested in coming in and making huge changes. Again, there is a lot of good work that is already taking place here, as evident by your data that's available on MCAT, I'm sorry, on the DESI website and other sources. So I would say that managing that level of anxiety or fear would be easier if we're able to engage in dialogue. Understanding what those concerns are is important. So I would say that that's one way I would help address the anxiety and fear that might come up as part of the change process. Additionally, I think, as you think about frameworks to process change management, you know, having a vision is important, a co-constructed vision that folks can get behind. Having the skills and the resources to manage that vision is also really important. I think that the buy-in from the community, if you have a co-constructed process, I think folks are more, again, motivated and bought in to the ideas that you might have. Again, I just would say that ongoing dialogue is important, different ways that we can engage in conversation, whether it's, again, surveys, dropping into the superintendent's office, whatever it might be, but I am open to hearing from families in the broader community about their concerns about the transitional process. But I would say it is, it would be both managing the process of change and also helping to manage people. But again, leveraging the strengths that are already in place, I think, would be really important.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Kathy?
All of my questions have been answered.
All right, Dan?
Maybe just one very brief follow-up question, coming back to one of Dawn's original questions about cellphone usage. So you did a fabulous job of, obviously, speaking to interventions that are happening during class time, but that gray area, right, the out-of-class from passing periods, after school, before school, et cetera. How have you helped, or what has been, what are your thoughts around reducing risk in those timeframes?
I think it's important to have opportunities during, again, advisory or morning meetings where, one thing that we're developing in the district I'm in is a little tech talk cards, and on those tech talk cards, there are questions where you're asking students, students sort of grapple with the question around, you know, what would you do if someone tried to friend you on an app and you didn't know them? So then students turn and talk and engage in conversations around what they would do, how they would respond, and then, you know, you have a broader conversation about the ideas that surface. So it's taking that proactive approach, I think, is important. So if we're talking about ways that we can effectively use social media and our cellphones, et cetera, if we create an environment where students feel included, where they feel, again, they have a sense of belonging in the community, you're taking, again, that proactive approach and establishing those relationships between peers, and I think that that would help address some of the gray area that you were talking about. When students might have a misunderstanding or make assumptions about someone else, it may very well be because they have not had an opportunity to understand that other person. So creating opportunities where students are engaging in conversations, where they're engaging in building relationships and sharing ideas, I believe, would help address some of those concerns. And also, again, I think it's important to maintain open lines of communications with the families so that families are also engaging in those conversations with their children about effective use of social media.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Kelly?
Mashpee is a huge diverse community. Unfortunately, our staff and our schools does not represent our student body. How would you implement trying to recruit people to come and work for us?
So the district I'm currently in, we received a DESI grant for the teacher diversification. I'm not sure if Mashpee is a part of that group, but it is an excellent way to think about creative ways to provide incentives to ensure that the staff and administration is, represents our student demographic. And so I would say that one of the things that we have been talking about is how do we encourage staff of color to want to apply? One of the things that we're doing in my school district is creating affinity spaces, really where teachers and staff, as well as students, there are student affinity groups as well, can get together and really think about ways that they are sharing their experiences, and it's a level of support that's also provided. So that is something where I think that as staff of color are recruited into a district, they then would feel that they're not alone in this. So I would say that level of support, the support system, is really important. Another thing could be signing bonuses or other incentives. There has to be a clear path to advancement, if that is something that teachers are interested in expanding, moving on to administration, that there is a clear path for that as well, that could be an incentive. But I do think that we have to go beyond just posting our positions in the normal places that we typically post, but actually going out to other places that we wouldn't like, leveraging the teacher's lounge, or leveraging, heading down to different historically Black colleges and universities, if that's something that we are open to doing. But I think that we have to extend beyond just the typical measures that we've taken and also think about ways that we are supporting the staff as they come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, do you have any more questions?
Does anyone have any other questions at this point? All right, I'll turn the floor back over to you for closing remarks.
I am just truly grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening. It was a joy and pleasure to meet all of you. I am grateful for your thoughtful questions. It is clear that you're committed to developing and sustaining a culture that is going to be one that is supportive of all students, just based on the questions that you asked. So, again, I just appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
First off, I just want to thank both of our candidates. We have truly been honored to have such well-qualified individuals come and meet with the school committee, and I think it will be a hard decision, and it's no reflection on one individual versus the other, so thank you for coming in. All right, with that, I guess we need to start with thoughts.
Oh, you're looking at me, sorry.
Right next to my left.
That's fine. Again, I want to just echo Dawn's comments. Thank you both for coming in tonight. It was a pleasure to meet both of you and get to hear some of your experiences. It sounds like you both have, you know, very, very strong careers and have done some really great things where you've been, so it was very nice to hear that. I think some of the answers were, you know, what I was looking for in some aspects. I think some of them, you know, it'll, once you get in and understand some of the policies, like our cellphone policy we do have in place, which both of you pretty much echoed what our current policy is in some respects, so that was kind of nice to hear you had similar thoughts to what we've already established, and I appreciated that. I don't know, I don't know how much you want me to go into things, like...
Well, you can start with just your general.
Yeah, I think...
What do you think is most important?
I think, yeah, clearly, as you heard from our questions, DEIB, and maybe you've seen in the news recently, some of our struggles here in our district is making sure that our community is aware of what's going on in our schools, but also supporting and making the changes that need to be made. I think the answers I heard tonight, I think, affirmed that we have two really great candidates here who see similar things and are looking to continue to move that work forward that we've begun. It's not a slow process, so I appreciated hearing both of your answers to those questions related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and I think that's kind of important. I also did like what I heard in relation to improving student achievement and looking at the data to kind of help move that meter as well. So I think those are kind of my top two priorities, our student achievement and making sure our students are able to leave this district with the skill set necessary to be successful adults and productive members of whatever community they may find themselves in. And I think second is, that comes through that reinforcement of they have a place where they belong. So I guess that is how I saw what I heard tonight, so I appreciate, again, both of your answers to those questions, and I know sometimes being put on the spot can be a little intimidating, especially when talking about such sensitive topics, but I appreciated your candor in those moments, so thank you.
Dan, your initial thoughts?
Yeah, so I will keep my thoughts brief because this, in some ways, feels like the last episode of Survivor. There you have two fabulous individuals, you're just trying to figure out what right choice to make. I'll echo some of what Kathy shared. I think that we are very lucky this evening to have two incredibly qualified and really, in your own unique way, special candidates. So just excited, I don't think by any means we can go wrong either way, and yet you all, you both bring your own flavor to the work and your own lived experience and just overall experience. So as Kathy shared, I think you both had very thoughtful answers, obviously, in the questions we asked. You know, I think you both are correct, you know, this is clearly very near and dear to our hearts, and we want to continue to see our school district strive, recognizing some of our growth points as well, and I think that you both were able to kind of answer, at least for me, some of the questions I had related to how to work through and continue moving forward in some of those growth areas. So thank you for your time this evening.
Do you have any initial thoughts?
I mean, I, like, echoing Kathy and Dan, I think we have two incredible candidates, and I don't think either option would be the wrong option. I think that both of you could do amazing work in our district, and both of you seem very open to listening, which is an incredible quality for any person in general, but I think, especially coming in for an interim, listening is really, really needed because it's a one-year position. And like we were saying when we first started searching for this position, it was, we need someone to hold the wheel, and holding the wheel includes listening. And holding the wheel includes listening. And I mean, I'm here for the best interest of the students. I want them to be able to learn from you guys and to build a connection, because I think connections between administration and kids is some of the most important connections you can get in a school district. But I mean, obviously there was somewhere, it was like, oh, okay, that's a different approach, but we're all here to listen and we're here to adopt to each other.
Kelly, initial thoughts?
Thank you both for coming in and telling us a little bit about yourselves. And you both hit the nail right on the head. The most important thing is the students and their achievements and what they can strive to do. You know, different approaches to different things doesn't mean it's a bad thing. We all have to, you know, bend and weave and like Eve said, we need somebody to grab the wheel, but you also have to listen to your first mate, who probably has more knowledge about Mashpee than you do. So seeing that you both honestly are more than willing to listen to the people that have been here and take that into consideration along with the kids, because they are the most important thing, we are very lucky to have two very well-qualified people in front of us. And thank you guys so much for coming.
Brian, initial thoughts?
I want to echo my fellow committee members. I wish there was a third option to take both of your strengths and weaknesses and mix them together. You know, you both are great candidates. You know, looking at the scores, you know, I do appreciate the fact that you did do some research, whether that's looking at the data that is online from DESI or having familiarity with the Cape or the area. I do think that some of our priorities, when it comes to the mental health and some of the other issues that we are facing, is how I would make my decision this evening. I also feel as if it was very helpful to also get a superintendent's transition plan from one of the other candidates as well. I think that we can take all the information that we would need to make this decision. And I think that you both have done that this evening, so thank you.
All right. Once again, I do thank you for coming. It is a tough decision. I kind of boil it down, I think, to five things from my perspective. You know, I'm very concerned about change management. Having been in the business world for a gazillion years, you have to deal with change every day. Here in the schools, every day is a new day and you have to be able to adapt to that. Having, you know, having the best plan is only good if you're able to adapt to what you're, to the changing environment and to what happens. I'm looking for someone who's going to be very, very visible. I don't know that you can replicate what the former superintendent has been doing, which is showing up almost at every event, but I want to see that desire to be visible at activities. I want someone who's going to be visible in the community, because the schools are a large part of the community, and be also visible with the Wampanoag Tribe. They're a very important part of this community. So I want someone who's going to be visible there. I want someone who's going to be in the classrooms, looking as a coach, as a mentor, to the teachers and to the students, because it's all about the students at the end. We've struggled with diversity forever, so I want to hear plans and wanted to hear plans in regard to how to improve the diversity in our schools. And both of you espouse some plans there. Innovation. I love to try new things, you know, because just doing the same thing that we did and expecting to get different results is why. All right? And I've tried that many times, and you have tried that. And so having that openness to try new things, that big board behind you, you know, the touchscreen? We didn't have that when I first joined this committee back in the dinosaur age. But I was using one in business and I encouraged the superintendent at the time to buy one. And then, now what? We have them in every classroom. So taking an idea, making it, if it works, and expanding it where necessary. Mashpee is, is an innovator from the standpoint of, we have a pre-K program. So four-year-olds can attend our, our pre-K program free of charge. We were one of the first, I think we were the first on Cape Cod to do that, probably one of the first ones here in Mashstichusis to do that. And, you know, I'm still waiting to see ultimately the empirical results, but my gut tells me we made the right decision to implement that. And so I'm looking for someone who can carry on status quo, because I think we are doing good things, but also think outside of the box. How can we resolve some of the issues that we have? The other thing that is important to me as I make a decision here is student and parental involvement. How do we engage our students? So, you know, even if they do have a cell phone in the classroom, but they're not spending all their time on the cell phone, because that's more entertaining than learning what is being taught in the classroom. They need to, we need to have that buy-in from them and we need to have the buy-in from the parents. So having an open door, being able to have many forms of communication with our parents. If one thing doesn't work, try something else. I will tell from, tell you from past experience, we've tried to do coffees, they haven't really succeeded. So maybe, that might be something that will work for somebody else. It, you know, past results don't necessarily indicate and are indicative of future results, so maybe someone can do it better. So those are kind of my thoughts of how I try to wrap my hands around making a decision and what's important to me. So I guess the next step here, guys and gals, is to make a decision based on everything that you've heard. And I know it's going to be a tough decision, but I think this district does need to move forward. I think we've got two exceedingly capable candidates to help move us forward for FY25 and for the future. Okay? So the next stage, step here is getting a motion and then we'll have further discussion. So I don't know who wants to step forward or if you want me to step forward.
Sure. You're looking for the motion to appoint.
I'm looking for a motion to appoint or if you want to have further discussion, we can do that also. Dan, you know...
So just a quick question. Recognizing that Eve is not a voting member this evening, will she be able to be a part of that dialogue?
Yes.
As we progress, okay? Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, the only thing she can't do is vote.
No, but I would like to know what her thoughts are and what her, definitely.
I would expect everyone to express, at this table, to express their opinions.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
We have an open forum here, so. All right, Kathy, I'm sorry to delay you.
That's fine. I'm just going to throw it out there, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Dr. David Thompson as interim superintendent for school year 24 to FY25.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Brian. All right, discussion.
So, am I up on deck?
Go for it.
All right. So again, in my viewpoint, incredibly challenging decision to be made here. I think, listening to these two fabulous candidates, you know, seeing kind of the rock steady, long-term strength in Dr. Thompson, very clear, but also seeing lots of historic and new kind of approaches from Dr. McCall, you know, my, my heart kind of leads me to say, you know, let's move in a direction actually to bring Dr. McCall into it. So that would kind of be my feedback, recognizing their input to...
Excellent. Eve, you're on deck. What do you think, Eve?
Like I said, we have two incredibly strong candidates. I can't tell you exactly which one I think is best, but I can tell you that, I mean, both of them would do incredible job. I appreciate Dr. Thompson's focus in mental health, as I believe it's a struggle right now in schools and it really, really needs to be looked on. And I also appreciate Dr. McCall's focus on diversity, because again, that is, and I tell the kids, then I, when I talk to them, that's an incredibly important discussion and thing that we need in Mashpee right now. And of course, there are flaws in every person. And both of the candidates were very, very distinct on the fact that they want the kids to rely on the staff. I think it's very important for kids to have a safe space and a safe person in their schools. And a lot of times, they don't know where to go for that safe person. And I really, I do appreciate Dr. McCall's, her want of a student's sense of security and privacy, because sometimes kids will say stuff and then it just gets out and it gets out and it gets out. And kids should have a say on what is spoken, not necessarily about them, because kids will speak about anyone anytime, but what is released about them. Can I go with my notes? Yeah, I mean, it's just such a hard decision and I can't really say for distinction who I believe would be best, because I think both are just such great candidates that it's too hard to make a decision for me at this time.
Okay. No? That is a fair assessment, so thank you for that. Kelly?
It is. You both have your strengths and your weaknesses, like with any person. We at Mashpee, I do believe, need somebody that is very open and transparent. Our stakeholders, that's one of the main things that they had asked from us, is that the person, the people that we do bring in, to be open and transparent, to have that open-door policy and that communication with them. It is tough. Dr. McCall, the fact of your diversity is, is one of my nearest and dearest things. And Mr. Thompson, the fact that, I mean, Dr. Thompson, the fact that you, you know, you just seem like that type of guy, you're going to be running down the football field with the football players, you know? You both have great attributes, you really do, and this is one of the hardest decisions I think the five of us are going to have to make. We have to pick somebody to grab the wheel after 29 years of somebody, you know, being there, who has done, you know, a great job and who has built relationships. So whoever it is that we choose, you know, is, is going to have some tough shoes to fill, I, I personally believe, you know, Dr. Thompson just meets more of what we're looking for in Mashpee at this time, to kind of, you know, take the bull by the horns and, and let's go. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, it's definitely a hard decision and I appreciate Eve for her input, because it is important to hear students' voice. I think after hearing her, I'd be changing courses now, but yeah, I mean, it's definitely a hard decision. It's not something that we take lightly. We know this is an interim, you know, temporary, you know, one-year appointment, but we will be looking for a permanent super as well. And I think that, you know, I've asked all the questions I could ask and feel like I can make a decision.
Okay. Do you have a feeling one, one direction or the other, Brian, at this point?
Yeah, my decision would be for Dr. McCall.
So I think it's important, as I think about what this role is going to be for FY25, and as we transition from an interim to hopefully a permanent superintendent, I think it's important that whoever is in this position be a strong mentor for our, for our team at the administrative level, our principals, of which we have several new ones and young ones also, who need and will need help, oh, who need and will need help and assistance to be able to do their jobs and to be effective in the classrooms. You know, I, I, I want that principal to be out there, or I'm sorry, superintendent to be out in the classrooms. I want them to be visible, I want them to be coaching, I want them to be mentoring. I want the teachers to not be afraid that you're coming into the classroom, because oh gee, I don't have my plan book updated, God forbid, and I'm going to get some marks against me because I didn't do that, that you're really looking at, well, maybe they didn't have time to do that, because they're doing something else instead, which is bringing a better outcome to our students. And so I want that, you know, I want that approach. You know, the two candidates here we have, we've got one that I would say with 27 years of experience, has been very similar to our past superintendent, has gone through the reins, been in the schools and has, has developed up through there. And I, you know, I add value to that. On the flip side, I heard some very positive things, particularly like in regard to Dr. McCall's saying that she would want a mentor, because having, my expectation is, and I didn't think about it really for an interim, but for a full, you know, our permanent superintendent that we're going to bring in, we should, they should have a mentor to help them if, if it's necessary. That's not a bad thing. That's, you know, to recognize that you may need help in bringing everyone forward and having someone who can give you objective advice, that's pretty good. That's a pretty good insight from my perspective. So, you know, I like that. You know, as we talked about diversity, you know, I heard some good things here. You know, I like the idea of developing our own. I know that's what the Wampanoag tribe is trying to do, is develop internally. And to have that thought process, I think is important. You know, we have, what, one, maybe two teachers who are Mashpee graduates within our faculty. I'd have to pass that off to our... I'd have to pass that off to our union rep, but I, I think it's only one or two, and...
No, it's, it's more than that.
You have more than that at that other time right now, but I can think of, well, we've got one right there.
Okay. We have a few.
Yeah, we've got at least half a dozen.
Okay. Half, half a dozen out of approximately 162-ish teachers, so...
No, there's more than that, too.
Of teachers?
Yes.
No.
I'm making everyone else say that.
Okay. So I was focused on that. But anyway, it's a relatively small number that we have been able to develop. Be great if we had more. You know, it always will be great to have more. You know, it has been a challenge to be able to bring diversity here to Cape Cod, and to have someone that will have thoughts on how to do that, I think that's important. I like both. I'd like to be like Eve and just be able to make, not make the decision, but unfortunately, most of us don't get paid to do that.
She's 17 years.
We have to make the decision.
Can I make my comments about why I chose what I chose? Again, echoing what everybody said, Dr. McCall, you, you have a very impressive background. I appreciate coming from a different profession. I think what swayed me is this is an interim year, there is a lot of change going on, kind of what we're looking for, I think. Another thing for me that I, I liked, what I heard, was that fostering of relationships, not just with the students and the families, but I really think fostering the relationships within the classrooms with the faculty and staff is, is vital, and I think it needs to be on a more regular basis than quarterly or monthly, I guess. I, I like the idea of being very visible throughout the day, so that the teachers, who might not always be at the events, because they have their own families and they've done their day of work and have educated our students to the best and, you know, best of their abilities, but I think sometimes having that visibility point and access outside of the dreaded, you know, central office, not that it's dreaded, but you know what I mean, that, that like, ooh, you got called to the office kind of mentality, I think. You both touched on it, but I felt one had a stronger answer over the other in terms of how that would look, should they step forward into this position. So for me, I think that was another really big point. I think there are definitely some, you know, again, echoing what's been said, you have some innovation ideas that, or innovative ideas, rather, that we might not have tried in this district before, and then some that maybe we have tried but might have a different perspective, you know, have someone from a outside perspective say, yeah, you tried this, but did you tweak it this way, or did you nudge it that way? I think both of you would be able to do that, but I guess that's kind of, those were the two points for me that made me lean one way as opposed to the other, because I think we all agree we could go with either one and probably be in a really great spot, but for me, those were my two kind of deciding, like tip of the scale, just slightly factors.
Any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion on the table to appoint Dr. David Thompson as the interim superintendent for FY25, and that has been seconded. If there's no further discussion, I think, folks, it's time we take a vote. I'll start, do you?
All right, I will be happy either way, but my vote will be no.
Kathy?
Again, I will be happy either way, but my vote is yes.
Kelly?
I would be happy either way, and my vote is yes.
Brian?
My vote is no.
I knew this was gonna happen.
That's way good. You're the big man.
That's, that's where I'm, you know. So I think about what I want and what we need. What I want is a combination of both of you, and what I need is for us to get through FY25 and be able to conduct a robust search for a permanent superintendent. And I'm more comfortable at this point, although I really, really, really like a lot of the things I heard from Dr. McCall, I feel more in my comfort zone with Dr. Thompson, so I will vote yes. That will make it three for Dr. Thompson to against the motion he carries. Congratulations, Dr. Thompson. And Dr. McCall, we wish you the best of luck. We appreciate you taking the time to come in and meet with us, and maybe down the road we will meet again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Thompson, you're welcome to stay if you want. We'll be reaching out to you probably tomorrow to set up a conversation.
I think the next conversation might be important.
You might be uninterested, so thank you very much. All right.
All right.
Kathy, go.
I'm right here.
Sherri?
Sherri?
She's right there, behind Elijah.
She's got it.
I'm losing my mind, but could you make the full motion? I don't understand what you're doing there.
I read it up to this point here. I did not make the full motion up to that part. I stopped right there. I did not read the rest of that. Would you like me to remake the motion?
Yes, please.
All right. So, in the interest of process, I will restate my motion to appoint Dr. David Thompson as interim superintendent for school year 2425, subject to the candidate's acceptance of the position and subject to a mutually agreeable contract negotiated by the chair in consultation with our council.
Do I have a second again?
Second.
Second, keep my mind. All right. Any further discussion on that, on the margin? All right. Dan, how do you vote?
So, no.
All right. Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's four to one. All right. We will be in contact tomorrow on that. Onto new business. So first item, so our prior, well, our current superintendent is our representative on the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity, Diversity Committee. Obviously, with her end date in August, we need to appoint a new representative to that committee. Any ideas, thoughts? And I'm not sure if they are monthly, if they meet monthly or quarterly.
In monthly.
In monthly. So this would be a monthly meeting.
Now, was there a reason that the superintendent was the representative? Or is that just how it worked?
I believe it was because she was kind of representative of the entire district and kind of knew what was going on within the district and what struggles and issues were facing the district. Whether we have another administrator or someone upper-level faculty or staff that would be interested, I think it's more beneficial for us to have some, personally, I think, maybe more beneficial for someone who is in the classrooms, in the buildings, who knows what's going on, whether at the administrative level or at that, that level, to be on that, because I think they're bringing that perspective a little bit better than maybe we could at the higher school committee level, but again, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Dan?
And I, I'll piggyback off Kathy. I think it's also someone who should have some decision-making capacity within, within our district. So I, I don't know if we're per se identifying someone currently, but I would say should probably still fall within the intended super, superintendent or assistant superintendent.
Well, that's what I was thinking. I was kind of thinking maybe Hope, Dr. Hanscom, could she run along?
Hey, I don't, who else here in the audience, so...
Could she leave?
She might have.
She may have. I don't know if that's something she...
If she was, if she would be interested in it.
Sorry, sorry.
No, you're okay.
So...
No, 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 it's okay.
Can you just tell me what you're saying?
We're, we're appointing you to a committee.
I'm on. I'm in. What are we talking about?
The Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee?
Oh, is this, you have to appoint someone for, in place of the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. I'm happy to do it as a former special educator, forever special educator, and would be thrilled to be a part of...
Well, that's what made me think of you.
Any kind of way that we can make things better for this community and more inclusive. But if someone else is interested in it, that's fine, too. Bye, bye.
I think she'd be a great choice.
I do, I do, too.
Should I make the motion?
Make the motion, yeah.
All right. I will make the motion to appoint Dr. Hanscom as our representative to the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee.
And I would gladly second that.
All right. Motion by Dan, second by Kelly. Any further discussion?
We just send a letter to the, or someone will follow up with the town manager select board.
We'll, we'll send a, a letter saying that this, that Hope is our appointment, yeah, 'cause they sent a, a email to me.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion, or question? Dan, how do you...
I vote yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, yes. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. I do wanna say I was off today, that is why I'm like running around, going, what do you think I worked it out?
You deserve a day off today.
No, no, it was a sick day for my kid, but I'm here, I'm focused, just not as good as I would have.
All right. Thanks. We couldn't have told any different, so thank you.
Oh, good.
All right, so we take care of that. Next item, so at the prior meeting, we talked about the Mashpee Public Schools Bully Prevention Intervention Plan and a number of other things somewhat related, and tried to, so I tried to boil this down into something that we could work with. I do think it's important for us to establish a focus group or a task force that can work on this. I did reach out also to our council with the recommendation from the superintendent. There is a bullying presentation that is done to the administration and the principals, I believe, by council every year, asked if they would be able to come in and do that. If they were willing to do that, we just would have to find a date that would work for the committee members.
And that's, that's great, to educate the admin and the staff.
As a start, yes.
Yeah, but that should also trickle down to the kids.
I've had some thoughts on that, but I'll wait until we get...
No, I'm not, I'm not proposing solutions. I think really just the solution that I'm proposing right now is formalizing a group that then can take some of these actions and steps so that we can dig deeper into this, unless we wanna do it as a whole committee at each meeting, but I think that would be a little more challenging. But I'm, I'm open to ideas. Let's be innovative.
All right, fine. Jump right in. So I agree, yes, we should probably have a task force. I'd like to know who will be setting that task force up, one. Two, I do think there should be a standing agenda item on all of our agendas going forward to discuss these types of issues. I feel like, you know, there's a concern that we've heard in the community that people are watching our meetings and feeling that we don't discuss what is at the heart of the matter, which is some of the climate and culture within our school district that unfortunately is not values that we want Mashpee students to have. I would also like to ask that in addition to a task force to look at the bullying prevention and intervention, intervention plan, I would like to task the curriculum subcommittee and Dr. Hanscom, who is our director of curriculum, to maybe find some innovative curriculum, and maybe Dr. Thompson, too, with his past experiences, but I was at the volunteer brunch the very next morning, and it was an interesting experience after coming off of that Wednesday meeting, let me say that. I also then heard from a parent who attended a PTO meeting the following Monday, who said parents in that meeting left her in tears and she left early, and she, I advised her to talk to the principal of the building at which this incident occurred. I advised her not to quit, to keep using her voice, and, you know, we might not always agree, but I think hearing opposition voices is important, and I think listening to everyone is important. And I was really discouraged to hear that, and the sad thing is, is some of the people that caused her to have those feelings and leave that meeting were at our Wednesday night meeting as well outraged at the bullying in our schools. So I found a bit of irony in that. That being said, I would like our curriculum task force, I was sitting there listening to volunteer, you know, our great coordinator, Consuelo Carroll, talk about mentors and, you know, how volunteers are great individuals who come into our school, and we are really fortunate, we've got the Southport Falcons, we've got past people in our town who, either educators, I know like the former town librarian volunteers still, you know, there, there's all these people who come into our schools and interact with these children. And going back to some of what we heard tonight, some of what we have discussed, I feel like we need to see if there's a curriculum out there that not only touches the students, but I would like smaller groups. Like I was thinking, I had this like brainstorm, but then Consuelo was like, there's legal stuff, and I went, of course, there's legal stuff. But like getting, you know, at the high school, for example, we've got six grades, get one kid from each grade, they meet with one person, half an hour, maybe every other week, to just talk, just be like, this is what's going on. Like, I went to the game the other day, I scored five goals. Another kid could be like, man, I watched you at that game, it was awesome, or, oh, I'm going through this thing, and maybe the kids could be support, like building those connections within the school to help people understand we all come from different experiences. So it started with that conversation with Consuelo, and she was like, well, mentors have all these legal layers, and I was like, eh, eh, eh. But I'm wondering, is there a curriculum out there? Is there some kind of curriculum that can be implemented in our school, but not only for the students, but there needs to be a mandatory parental piece that goes out to the parents? Because tying back to that PTO conversation, it starts at home, we all agree that it starts at home. How are we getting this message? The kids are getting it, the ones that take it and run with it are gonna take it and run with it, the ones that it's not gonna necessarily fall on, because it's not necessarily supported in other places in their lives are gonna struggle maybe a little bit with it. I don't believe that means they're a lost cause. I do believe that means we need to figure out how we support them, and again, it's not just a school problem, and I'm gonna go back to that, we need community buy-in, we need the police, we need the fire, we need the town manager, the select board, everybody to buy into this and make it a town issue we are working together to solve. But if we can start with finding a curriculum that would implement some sort of, like, peer leaders, but like another step, like, I, I kinda look at my Girl Scout troop, for example, and I have older girls, I've got girls from fifth grade to currently 10th grade. There are some meetings where they come in and they just need to say, man, that test today was awful, and just go over, or, ugh, my brother's at home and he's doing blah, 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 and like, they just need to vent. And I feel like that sometimes is where some of what happens in our, our school is, is stemming from. And I'm not saying we need to become social, like, mental health care support groups, but I do feel like if there's a way we can tie it into what our social, emotional learning goals are for our district, our goals towards fighting this bullying and this issue that we are currently, once again, looking square in the eye with, and, and create those communities within our school, and we mix it up, like, it's not necessarily the same six kids, like, keep them together for maybe half the year, then switch it, you know, like, or keep them for the whole year, and then the next year it's a different group. But they also develop that, that connection with, whether it's a faculty, I know volunteers, again, we run into the legal stuff, but if there's like, someone in the community that they can say, you're my coach, or you're my volunteer who comes in to put the books away at the library, like, if there's something that can tie into this task force, but on a curriculum side, that we can then maybe look at the budget and say, how can we find money to fund this if we don't already have funding for it? Because I really feel strongly that that is the work that is going to... Because I really feel strongly that that is the work that is going to make the change. We don't know where other people come from, I mean, we all know each other on one level, but if we sat down and had a conversation of where we all came from and how we all got here, we'd probably learn a lot more about each other and be able to really communicate even more effectively. And I guess that's where I'm going with this, and why I feel so strongly that, great, we're gonna have a task force about bullying, we need to go one step further, we can talk about this policy, we're gonna be bound by the laws, to a point. We can only do so much within this policy that isn't gonna be tied to some kind of, whether DSC regulation, whether state law, like, there's gonna be something, I'm not saying there's not room for improvement, there's always room for improvement, I am a firm believer in that, but I do feel we need to go one step beyond just looking at a policy, and how do we start fostering these communication and connections within our schools? I think the elementary schools do a great job, but little kids, they're, I don't wanna sound cliche, they're easy. They're gonna sit and talk, I, I guess, I just, I really feel strongly about this, and I would like to ask if the curriculum subcommittee could, or working group could meet, maybe find out, I've been trying to do my own research, but I might not have the same access to industry data and programs that our administrative staff might have, so I guess I, I look to our leader. If you, you don't have to now, if you don't want to, but if you wanna prepare something. Okay, well.
With this instance, you know, you, you turn to the police. I can almost guarantee you that SRO Hennessy has some type of program that she can offer, or that they can offer. There's a couple of things out there that I've seen, it's called, one of them I think is called the Diversity Challenge, and it's like, all these different steps that you can take. But as far, like you said, as far as this book, where, where this book binds us by the law, like, there's, the laws have changed so much in the past three years, that it's almost, I don't wanna say impossible, because anything's possible, but it is really difficult to figure out the what, right ways to go. Like you said, the mentors, and there are all these legal things, like, and I'm wondering if reaching out, or if, you know, you wanna reach out, being curriculum, or our curriculum subcommittee, reach out to Officer Hennessy and say, hey, what can you do, or what type of programs is it that you know of, you know, that we could possibly implement into our curriculum?
And that's just one resource, I firmly believe, you know, police have one way of looking at it, I would like to also get maybe mental health professionals involved in this conversation, maybe more so than the police.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, I feel like, you know, police do a lot, and teachers do a lot, and I don't wanna see their plates keep piling up when we do have resources on Cape Cod, which, we're kinda fortunate where we live, I feel like, and Dan, you can speak to this since it's your world, but I feel that we're fortunate that we do have a lot of nonprofit organizations that are able, and, and for-profit organizations that could probably partner with us on some level, and to some degree, to find things that doesn't put it all on the police or the teachers, but incorporates all of the pieces that go into our children. So, I don't know, that's, I just feel like police might put parents off.
Yeah, so, so first off, I'm just gonna be very blunt, very quickly, the Terminology Task Force makes me wanna vomit immediately. I think that it's, has a negative punitive context, and, and I know it's just the wording that we chose for this evening, but I think it, it does make it a very, again, punitive process of what we're looking to kind of like snuff out, when in reality, we all kind of talked about last meeting about, again, it's a community issue, it's a national issue, it's something that I think requires a much further understanding. And one thing that I, I feel, I would be remiss if I didn't kind of say out the gate here is, I think that we're still failing to hear what we shared in the last meeting, which is, we need to have a starting point, right? I think that we're trying to create a solution for something that we can't solve. I know that this is a step towards creating a, a, a better dialogue around these things, but I, I think we're still missing the boat on this. I still feel as though we need to start with someone facilitating listening sessions that has all of these constituents that were outlined, and then being able to boil that down, and then identify how do we then move from there to take that next action step, opposed to just coming in swinging with, you know, ideas of what we do next. Because again, this, this room was filled last, last, you know, last, last meeting, and, and we have a much smaller showing now that the fire has kind of diminished, right? So I, I think we need to re-engage those individuals that were here last, last meeting, plus more. So that's a very long-winded way of me saying, I don't per se think that we need to jump immediately to creating or moving forward with a task force, I think what we need to do is create space, create an open opportunity for families, caregivers, teachers, you know, other town officials, providers, you know, individuals who are able to all share their, their opinions, because this is more than bullying, right? This is a major, a plethora of social determinants of health that are impacting the ecosystem in the school. And I think until we have a, a, a really meaningful conversation about all of those intersects facilitated by someone who can do that, then we're just throwing spaghetti at the wall.
Sure, go ahead, before I say something.
What did you call me?
He said before he says something.
Something citizen, I'm like, well, I am, I am a Mashpee resident also, so, and I never sit over here. Just a couple of things that I wanna just ask the committee to consider, because I think, I think you're all making really good points, but before the open session, I do think we need to do a better job of communicating to our constituents what the rules are, what the laws are, what we already have in place, and how it's used. Because I don't think we've marketed what we're doing well, and I think something went out on social media that was horrific, and sparked a narrative that may or may not be what is truly happening in schools. Did that truly happen? Of course it did, and it's the most disgusting thing I've ever seen. But, and, there's a lot of stuff happening that I don't think ever comes to this table, we just don't talk about it. And so I think we've done ourselves a disservice by starting with the solution when we haven't gone through the needs assessment yet. So I think that starts with, what are the laws? Having our attorney come out and do a presentation that we film, so that people who can't come to these meetings, because they have lots of other things going on, can watch, and saying, this is what the mental health, this is what the bullying law of 2012 is, this is what the mental health law of 2022 changed, this is what discipline looks like according to the law, this is what the schools have to do. That's one thing, just so everybody's starting from the same sort of knowledge base. And then, then we listen, okay, what are the, like, what do you want, what's the space that we're not filling? And then we start to do a needs assessment of what we have and what we need, and make plans from there. So I'll stop at that, but I did wanna just back up the train a little bit, because again, I think a lot of this is a marketing issue, in terms of, we do the work, we don't talk about the work so much. So I think there are things in place that people just don't even know about. So thanks for letting Joe Q. Citizen speak.
And, and may I just respond to that group? I think, is it put the, you know, cart before the horse, or the corp, cart before the horse, or horse before the cart? I, I think that they could be, in some ways, done in unison, but kind of, you know, what Dr. McCall was saying in a lot of ways, again, just the space, the affinity, the ability to have a, an opportunity to vocalize and figure out, you know, what are those gaps, right? It may, it may be a misunderstanding of what those legal, you know, constraints are, great, and yet, folks are still gonna be upset about it, right? And that, I think, fosters not only an opportunity for our, our, our community to share those frustrations, but also if there needs to be some form of advocacy to make some changes to some of these frustrating areas within reason, how do we also, you know, create that space for those folks to feel as though they're empowered enough to have a voice, to be able to move forward with that in unison with, you know, our desires as a, a committee and as a district? So that'll be my final thoughts, and I'll relinquish the floor, thank you.
So, I just wanna say a couple of things, and then, Brian, I'd appreciate your feedback. So, one, my intent here was to try to put some definition to all of this. So, we talked about varying stakeholders, varying groups being, try to have an inclusive group working together, and, you know, the question ultimately becomes, who are those groups, who are those representatives? Are we gonna do it with the full school committee, or do it as a subcommittee? That's all on the table. It's this committee who decides what that representation looks like. You know, if you want A and B, you can have A and B, if you want A, B, and C, you can have A, B, and C. It's totally up to this committee. All, all the intent here was, is put some definitive guidelines around what the heck we're trying to accomplish, because, you know, if we don't have any sort of definition, then, one, how are we gonna know where we get where we wanna be? And number two, how do we keep focused on really the things that we can move the ball on? And are most important to our students and to our families, faculty, administration, et cetera. So, we all have great ideas here, let's just try to, in my opinion, try to put some definition around what it is we wanna do, who we want to have do it, and how are we going to do it? Call it a task force, call it a working group, call it whatever you want. But, that's, that was my intent here, to help try to move this committee forward with all these great ideas. So with that, Brian, do you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I think it is important to leave it as a rolling item on the agenda. I also feel as if, as a committee, when we set our goals at our retreat, one of them was the drop-ins or the check-ins that we had, and we kind of made the, the schedule according to, you know, the times when budgets were coming out, and so on and so forth. I think that that would be an opportunity for us to at least have those conversations with the community to get their input. I do also feel as if, you know, it's really different when, you know, the roles are kind of reversed, because, I mean, it wasn't too long ago when we seen the students impersonating the George Floyd incident, that was just kind of, you know, not really brushed over, there were some people we brought in, so on and so forth. I mean, the recent hate crimes with the spray painting and the graffiti, like, that's not stopping. I think that a lot of this ties back into, I think that the schools have done a good job with our No Place For Hate initiatives. But I think that where we failed is bringing that initiative into the community and at the town level. The town of Hull has a No Place For Hate Town Committee, that says, their mission statement is Hull is a no place for hate, is a nonpartisan town committee dedicated to building bridges of understanding within our community. We seek to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion amongst all people, it is our goal to unite people to promote a just and inclusive community, provide support and education on diversity, celebrate our differences, and there's a list of objectives, but one of them is respond appropriately to incidents of racism, bigotry, and hatred. And I feel like a lot of this ties into that. I don't mind doing a citizens petitioners article to the town meeting for us to get a town committee, I think that's where we get the buy-in from the select board and everybody else to work on this issue. But I think it could also come from us as a school committee, and make that, you know, one of our asks, to go to Falls Town Meeting, to really get the towns' buy-in, I did think about going to the select board to also propose this. More than willing to make this a, an initiative for us as a school committee and as a body, because I do believe, you know, to Assistant Superintendent Hanscom's point earlier, you know, the school is, is doing some things. Can we improve? Definitely, but I think that needs to require everyone involved, from the students, from Eve's perspective, and all the other students that wanna be involved as well. And I think that's kind of like our next steps, where we should go and just leave this as an item. Whether it's a task force or it's not, we could have a representative on there, we can kind of make that and shape that to who we want as a representative from the town to be on this, so that we're actually bringing them to the table. I feel like our hands are kind of tied, and we're limited on what we can really do as elected officials in the school committee, but I do think that that is within our power to bring a lot of our initiatives and things out there into the community, and that would just be my recommendation, thank you.
Well, by all means. Kelly?
No, I, I, Brian hit it 100%. It's gotta be, and Kathy too, it's gotta be a town-wide thing, it can't just be a school committee thing. You know, we can fix it in school, but then they go out to the commons with their friends on bikes, and spray paint and swat stickers on the side of the, you know, buildings, or they're, you know, beating each other up and using racial slurs, or, you know, it's, it's, it's town-wide. And if I'm not mistaken, isn't there a big sign when you walk into Mashpee Town Hall that says, this is a no place to hate? So I don't honestly think that our town manager or our select people will have a, have a problem helping us at all.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, I think, to your point about wanting to have a starting point, you know, to Dan's point about a starting point, and like narrowing it, I think Dr. Hanscom's correct, I think we need to start with the laws. And I do feel, you know, if you look at what was posted on social media, a lot of it was complaints. When you boil it all down, it was complaints about communication. Yes, what happened, we all agreed that what happened was disgusting, atrocious, and not anything we want to happen in our community. But the essence of what we heard, to Dan's point, was a lack of communication on the initial incident. And I think, you know, if it's, whether we call it a marketing problem, whether we call it communications problem, I think educating people on the laws is paramount. I think a lot of people don't understand what the various laws these school officials and teachers have to work with. So I, I would be a very strong proponent of that, making that our starting point. I think to Dan's point, some things can happen concurrently with that. I think, you know, we can have some of those listening sessions where people are able to come together. You know, Brian's point about having the drop, you know, where we did the Zoom drop-ins, we didn't always have the greatest attendance, but at least the conversation might have been happening between us, but maybe if we invite specific people, you know, some of the people who spoke, who were more than willing, and, and they said publicly, we can go back and watch the video where they said, we'll be here to help, maybe we invite them in our first one, and say, okay, let's do it, let's have the conversation, let's record it, let's put it out there for people, and maybe that will get more people willing to come to the table and talk as well. But I do think that education of what legally we are able to, we as a district are able to do, and what our teachers and administrators, you know, have to work with, then I think is probably the most important piece. I know I saw a lot of misinformation posted online, and it was very hard not to be like, posting links to different laws and different things, and trying to educate, but I, I think that, I, I liked that idea of starting with that legal presentation. I don't know, Eve, do you have any thoughts, I know you've been kind of sitting over there, listening to us yammer.
There were, there were, there will always be bullying in schools. We can try our hardest to prevent it, we can do everything in our power to prevent it in our school, but there will always be bullying in schools. And a part of that, it comes from the, it, my mom has always drilled it into me that kids are their own person, but they get taught what they know by their parents. And we can't go into people's homes and be like, you're teaching your kids wrong, frankly, it's none of our business. But we have to get the kids at a young age, and I've seen a lot of, they're doing a lot of No Place For Hate in the KCC and the Quashnet, which I really, really love, because they're getting to them at a young age and telling them, okay, you can't do this. And like Kathy was saying, sometimes kids just need a place to vent. I have a saying with my friend, uh, thank you for listening to my TED Talk. After I vent to him, I just, thank you for listening to my TED Talk. And we need those people, we need staff, we need kids to know that they have those staff members to go to, and to just vent. And they need to be able to rely on their friends to just vent. I have so many friends who come to me, and they're like, I don't know what to do. And so they tell me, and I can either tell them, hey, maybe you should go to guidance about this, or give them my best advice, which isn't always the best that they can get. But we just have to start at the source, and eventually go out from that. The source, yeah, it's when they're younger, and at the high school, we're seeing a lot of issues, because we didn't have what they have now in the elementary schools when I was in elementary school. They tried their hardest, but there wasn't as much technology and ability and resources as they have now. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we just, we have to, I think, work with the younger kids, but also work with the older kids. Because we have a lot of assemblies, but frankly, kids aren't listening. They're talking to their friends, they're texting, they may not, they're not supposed to have their phones up, but they do, they find ways to do it. And we have to find a way to connect with the older kids, I don't know, I cannot tell you how. the older kids. I don't know. I cannot tell you how. Because I'm usually listening during assemblies, but there are always kids who don't. So, enough the kids we have issues with.
All right. Lots of great ideas, great discussion. I guess, this is where the organizational part comes back to, how do we organize this into a cohesive effort so that we can, obviously we can have this as a rolling agenda item, but to roll it out to, you know, unless we have something specific, or if the intention is, well, one, this committee generally is , meets on a monthly basis. If we want to do this, involve parents, students, faculty, et cetera, those types of discussions, we'll have to, does the committee envision doing that as a group effort at a committee meeting? Do you envision doing it with a subset of committee members? What's, what's the pleasure of the committee members?
Well, I, I think to Kathy's point, I think, I think it would be a great starting point for us to, again, begin with getting something prepared as a smaller group around how do we communicate the legality and, and what we're kind of bound by, right? That seems, not to minimize it, but that seems like a lighter lift of how do we boil down the important points of statutes and laws and what we, you know, what schools can and can't do, and then figure out, you know, strategic ways to get that out to the greater community. So I think that, that would be, in my mind, bullet number one.
Right. So, to that point, we can, as I said earlier, we can have a presentation done that could be taped and sent.
Yeah. And also, I think it may warrant a further conversation about modalities because I, we post our meeting, you know, every month.
Right.
And yet, the views are not that great. Right? So that's not going to be the solution. So I, I think, you know, bringing in Consuelo and others to talk about how do we really get this out, I think that that could be a really great opportunity. I know that after our last meeting, I also am on the hook to get us a perspective, you know, proposal or framework for how do we start a broader community discussion, which is in the works. And the person that I spoke to said that they would have some preliminary information that I could share with the group before our next formal meeting. Obviously, this one came up a little bit quicker than originally anticipated with our interim search. So that's kind of on my, my plate to provide to y'all. And so, at least, those are my, my first two thoughts. Because I think, you know, a lot could be gleaned. And then, I don't want to miss Brian's point too about, you know, what can we immediately take as a committee to the town at large to say, "Hey, we want to push this."
Well, right. And, you know, Brian's suggestion is time-sensitive. Particularly if you want it for October, it has to be in by July 11th, I believe.
I fully support Brian's idea.
I agree.
So, obviously, there's immediate steps that we can take as a committee to support things. And I wouldn't persuade, persuade us not to do that. I do think, you know, if, we've talked about potentially bringing in someone to help facilitate a discussion. So, what is, you know, if you bring someone in, you have to have some idea of what it is that you're trying to accomplish in order for them to be effective as a facilitator. That, that's kind of gets back to, we've talked about what I see as multiple lanes of things. Which ones do we, which ones are we going to focus on? How are we going to focus on those to make progress collectively across the board? I think maybe tonight's discussion will lead to, maybe at the next meeting, we can have some better ideas in regard to how to execute that. But at least to get the discussion rolling, I think in regard to what Brian suggested, you know, we don't have that as a voting item, but it clearly sounds like the consensus is that this committee would support that. And we probably can find five, five petitioners sitting here. So...
I personally would rather it not be a petition article. I'd like it to be something that the school committee brings as an article. I think it would be more effective and more powerful as us as a committee bringing it to the school committee, or bringing it to town meeting as the committee asking this and not as a petition. I'd like us to sponsor it.
So...
I know that ups the timeline on getting it, but...
And that's, that's a great point. The other, the component of it is then we have to define what that committee would look like.
I don't think it's, yeah, I, I think what Brian was saying is, we need to, correct me, Brian, if I'm wrong. I don't want to speak for you. But I believe it's, the Warren article would be putting the town to task to create a, a committee that would be comprised of the school committee. I mean, I, I don't know, I would like it to be all of us, but I just feel like, because we all represent a different constituency, and I feel like we all bring different voices to this table, I personally would like, I know it's adding one more meeting, and I know some of you might not appreciate me for saying this, but I do think it's definitely something all five of us should be a part of. I think it should be the town manager. I think it should be someone from the police department, whether it's the chief, deputy chief, I mean, it could be the SRO. But, I mean, I'm happy trying to draft out who I think it should be. But I think the Warren article should come from the school committee asking the town to begin this initiative for the No Place For Hate, or whatever we want to call it. If, if we use Hull's model, I mean, we already have No Place For Hate in our school here. Do we build off of that? But I, I just, that's my thought.
No, and you're headed, I think, in the right direction there, where we would have, if we want to sponsor that, and then we're going to define what we think the representation of it is, then I think, if, otherwise, you can do an article requesting that the select board create a committee. But then you're going to be at the mercy of, you know, they decide.
No, we need to do the legwork. I agree.
So, I think we have to define what that representation looks like and what groups, you know, because we just talked about the diversity, inclusion and diversity committee. You know, they should probably be a representative of that. So, there are various other constituencies. I think some public representation is important, too.
Faith organizations.
Sorry, Brian.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, no, I think that it is important. I think that because, you know, of the interest of time, it'd be best if we scheduled another special meeting to take place before then. But I think from now until then, I think that we can divvy up some of the legwork that needs to be done in regards to working on the draft for that, to get the community's input, to bring that here. I mean, anytime at town meeting, people are allowed to amend it from the floor. If other committees, it can be something where we can bring this to Hope, if she is the representative now, to bring it to the Inclusion, Mashpee Inclusion Diversity Committee, just like we kind of did with the superintendents. I feel like there was two of us, because we didn't meet quorum, because we don't want to violate open meeting law. But we picked two people out of us to go and do the initial interviews, and then you guys kind of came back and reported. I feel like that's something that we can do now. Because I did hear, I think it was Dan, that said the curriculum was important. We always have a curriculum subcommittee and a policy subcommittee. Rather than have the two representatives, why can't we just take somebody from curriculum, somebody from policy, to work with Hope on bringing forward, you know, whatever it is, the educational pieces and components. And then maybe some of us can just divvy it up. I don't know if Kathy wants to take the lead, and I don't mind helping her with the town meeting articles. But kind of taking on us, the ownership on us as a committee to kind of do our homework and our due diligence before the next meeting. So at least we can come with a game plan to say, "Okay, we've looked at it, and this is our recommendation, to bring a facilitator in or kind of help with the next steps." Because I feel like we don't have frequent meetings enough to kind of keep on these things. So I think that way, if we walk away with task, we can come back at the next available meeting, whenever we decide to have that special meeting, to kind of come back with what we've done and collaborate in the meantime. That would be my recommendation.
So, if we want to proceed at, I, I guess, if, if we want to proceed as a group to establish what this committee would look like, that we're asking to be formed, we, if you want to do it at, if you want to do a special meeting prior to the 11th, is that what I'm hearing?
If we can schedule, I know that I have some family travels coming up. My hope would be that I can attend, but just being very honest, I may not be able to. But I do think that that is a fabulous idea.
The only thing I cannot do between now and then, I am on the MASC nomination committee for MASC officers, and they're meeting Thursday night, the 27th. And then Tuesday night, the 25th, I have a work meeting. So, those are kind of my only two constraints. Well, Tuesday the, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 25th and July 9th are both out for me.
Do you have anything available next week?
I'm open next week.
You're open next week, Brian?
I'm out of town next week, but I can jump on virtually.
You could jump on virtually.
Yeah.
Kathy, next week?
Just the 27th is the only thing. Well, preferably not Friday, the 28th.
And Dan, you're not available?
I am, I am out of town and won't be able to be available.
She said you're out of town.
About the first week in July.
Are you back the first week?
I am. I would have to double-check my work, because I do have some other meetings that I chair. But I will try to work around it.
That week is fine with me, barring the fourth, obviously.
First week of July?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I mean, the holiday falls on Thursdays.
Right, we obviously can't do it then. Kelly?
That's fine. Because the following week, for the next two weeks after that, I'm not available.
And I was going to go into powwow weekend, too. So the first, second, and third would be my preference.
First, second, and third?
Yeah.
How about the first? That's a Monday.
All right, we can choose something. I can't confirm anything right now until I check my work schedule.
Okay. Kelly, the first?
The first works.
Kathy?
Everything.
All right, so let's, ten, what time? 5:30?
Keep it, keep it routine.
Yeah.
Okay. 5:30 on July 1st, we'll do a special meeting, or maybe something else on the agenda if necessary, related to the interim superintendent appointment.
Yeah.
If we have that. But, so how do we want to, how do we want to list this, I guess?
To discuss next steps.
As you talked about climate and culture, how do we want to define this?
I think it's, again, we should probably put it under Mashpee School Committees. I think it should go under whatever our rolling agenda item ends up becoming, whatever we want to name that, whether it's Mashpee's DEIB initiative. I think, because I do feel a lot of this does fall under that umbrella. Whether we want to call it, I don't know, I'm drawing blanks because I'm a little, it's a Monday, and it was a Monday of a Monday. So I'm a little running on fumes at the moment. I apologize.
Is there a goal that you work, that you agree to the norm is that this could fall under, your school committee goal? Because I feel like it's always cleanest to keep it under the umbrella of your, and I know there's an umbrella in your goal that you work on.
Well, we had improved communications with stakeholders. That was one of our goals. I don't either, and that's, thank you, Sheri. I, I think you're right.
But what if we decide as a group, we can put something together, like, hey, this is what we think it should be, and send it to you, and you can say, "Yeah, you're right." That way you don't have to spend time.
Yeah.
It's not to you, I just want to...
I, I like that idea.
Do you? Do you like it? Because we, no, I'm just saying, we're happy.
Because I'm very much ready.
I'm, I'm just wanting to come to something everyone agrees that this is what it looks like.
But if we send an email out and you only respond to Sheri, then it's not violating your open meeting or anything.
Yeah. All right, all right.
Thank you.
We will find some commonality that we can agree to in regard to what this item will be.
The date is the harder thing.
What's that?
The date is the harder thing, and you're not that.
I think, I think July 1st to 5:30.
July, July 1 works.
Hopefully, if Dan can do that. Because if not, I do think he should be here. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that positive energy into the universe while you dance.
And I'll, I will confirm with Town Hall, because the 11th sticks in my mind. But for some reason, 11th is a Thursday, and for some reason, I'm thinking Tuesdays was the cutoff. So, it could be, it could be the 9th. So, hopefully, we'll have 10, 10 people at the meeting that we can move forward with this. Okay?
Great.
All right. Anything else that needs to be brought for, that the chair was not aware of?
I just have one more agenda item request, and it doesn't have to be on the next meeting. It can be. But I did have someone from, I had Dr. Natana Greendeer Hicks reach out to me, asking if we could have a discussion about the integration of students from the tribal school into our school, because their school only goes up to a certain grade.
We actually talked about that at the joint, the joint meeting with tribal.
Yeah. And so she had reached out with me, reached out to me also. I know she has spoken to Brian as well about it. But I just wanted to publicly put that on as an agenda item request to maybe start that discussion of what does that look like? What supports do they need? Kind of open that conversation. I know I had said I would reach out to her personally, and then things got a little wonky. So I, I'm going to continue, I'm going to email her back as well. But we have been emailing about this, and I, I wanted to get it on an agenda for the future.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think who, from the school administration, I guess, Hope, Hope and...
No, yes. Sheri's here also.
Okay. Hope and Dr. Thompson will have to carry the boat on that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, before we adjourn. Does the chair still meet the chair of the select board and the town manager, the superintendent, or that hasn't happened?
We haven't had a meeting this month, no.
Okay.
We also had trouble scheduling when I was chair.
The chair?
We had one meeting, and that was it. The rest, I don't think we were able to schedule accordingly.
I thought that they, did you not, I thought...
I was never a...
She was never a part of it.
But, no, I think that schedule, as chairs change.
Yes.
Across the board.
Got all, all messed up.
Sorry, diverted.
Yes. We, like I said, we had one meeting in the beginning, and then we were unable to schedule anything past that meeting.
Yeah. I think that'd be beneficial. My only request would be, Mr. Chair, as you are the liaison to the select board, if we can get with the select board liaison, I believe it's Mr. Cotton.
Yeah.
To talk a little bit about this. So then that way the select board has, you know, kind of a heads up on what we're proposing with our, you know, articles, so on and so forth. So we can have some input. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and second.
I vote yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.